All right, I'm gonna call to order the common council meeting on August 24th, 2021 at 7:30. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alder Allen is absent with excuse. Alder Radifrada? Alder Gierhurt?
Here.
Alder Hertz?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strossman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Present.
Alder Wheeler is absent with excuse. You have a call, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. First up is public appearances for non-agenda items and also new appointments. We've got a few appointments here. First up is a new appointment to the bicycle committee for Miranda Byer, and she is here. If you wanna come on up and you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the bike committee.
Hi, I'm Miranda Byer. I've lived in Fitchburg for about 14 years. I live on Lacy Road. I'm interested in the bicycling committee because I do a lot of cycling myself. My whole family, we are all avid cyclists, and I think it would be a really great way to participate in my community.
Excellent. Any questions at all for Miranda? Or a motion to approve then?
I move approval.
Cited by Dave for a force by, moved by Gabriella. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we have Nick Richter next, and he is online. Nick, if you wanna introduce yourself and kinda talk about why you're interested, that would be great.
Yeah, hi, my name is Nick Richter. I'm a relatively new addition to Fitchburg. We moved here in April. I live on Richardson Street, and I'm interested because I just got my masters in public policy, and I'm looking to be more involved at the local level, kinda understand how I can help out locally, and just kinda try to create good policy.
All right, he lives on a very wonderful street. Any questions for Nick? Yeah? I don't see any. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Randy, cited by Julia. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, thank you, Nick. And we got one more. Andrew Slieger. All right, Andrew, why don't you tell us a little bit about why you're interested? Oh, we can't hear you yet.
Okay, I am also a resident of Fitchburg. I live on Richardson Street as well, and I heard there was a need for the assessment committee, so I'm filling in, I guess, as needed, and I'm looking forward to learning a little bit more about it.
All right, any questions for Andrew?
Andrew, what's your background?
My background is actually natural sciences, natural resources. I do own a home on Richardson Street, so at least I have that much. But yeah, my experience is pretty limited. That's why I figured it'd be good to be an alternate and then kinda get my feet wet before I start actually doing a little bit more on the committee.
Thank you for your interest, yeah, thanks.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Or a motion? Moved by Julia, cited by Randy. All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, thank you, Andrew. And I don't have anything else for public appearances on non-agenda items, so seeing nothing else, we can move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for that?
So move.
Cited by Joe, cited by Julia. Anything anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda and do separately?
Seeing nothing. All in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right, that is approved. Administrator's report, Chad.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? It seemed like the mic was not working properly. Just for anybody who's joining in regards to the nuisance abatement hearing later this evening, this is the correct meeting, and we will have that for the last item on the agenda, just as an informational item. I do have several things for my administrator's report for your information. I'll go through them here individually. The first one is the library will be resuming regular hours after the Labor Day holiday. Obviously, they've had a challenging experience with COVID, have continued to do some curbside pickup, and will be looking to, obviously, as I stated, resume normal hours after Labor Day. The postal contract station on Hatchery Hill is going to be closing August 30th. The city has been in continuous conversation with the U.S. Postal Service, and it had tried to intervene in order to make sure that the postal station at Hatchery Hill had remained open, but unfortunately, our efforts have not been successful. We're gonna continue to work with the U.S. Postal Service with the hopes of returning a postal contract station to the Hatchery Hill, or at least north Fitchburg area. And there is still a postal contract station at Hy-Vee. If you go to the front counter there at Hy-Vee, you can at least have some access to, at least limited, U.S. Postal Service services. Human Resources asked me to share that the police chief hiring process, an update related to that. At this point in time, it is not anticipated that a vote will be had on September 15th in regards to the candidates. The background investigations are anticipated to take until mid-September at this point in time. So at this moment, they do not anticipate those backgrounds being ready for the September 15th Police and Fire Commission meeting. The police department had rescheduled its community night out. That has been rescheduled to tomorrow night, I believe from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Nine Springs Golf Course. A heads up on an informational item, city staff has been working with business owners, including the Hop House over at Sub-Zero Parkway and Seminole Highway in regards to some parking issues. Hop House has been quite successful, it appears, and it has created some parking challenges. So staff is working on a proposal that would re-stripe Sub-Zero Parkway and add some additional on-street parking stalls in that neighborhood, in that area. So please, as a heads up, look for a proposal with a budget amendment forthcoming, or budget amendment request forthcoming. The Gorman Wayside, I would encourage you to visit the Gorman Wayside on Fish Hatchery Road near Old City Hall and the new, well, it's not so new anymore, but the new highway maintenance facility. The path and parking lot were recently repaved at the wayside, and there was also a notable anonymous donation that contributed to that project being completed. Many of you are aware of this. The pickleball courts in McGaw Park have opened. They have been wildly popular already. The city is still working on some landscaping and some concrete-related work, and obviously, the city recognizes that all of the desired amenities may not already be at the park, but hopes to work with the council and/or community organizations to add amenities as time goes on. The police department recently received information that it will no longer be eligible to receive the Beat Patrol grant that they had been receiving from the Wisconsin Department of Justice the last three years, actually, I'm sorry, the last five years. That grant was awarded to the police department as one of the cities above 25,000 in the state that has the top 10 in regards to crime statistics and crime rates. So fortunately, that means the city has dropped out of the top 10 as it relates to that particular grant program. However, it does mean that the $121,000 in annual funding that the grant had provided for two, a portion of two police officers, will not be available in 2022. A few meetings for information for the council members. There is a meeting in regards to the Shale Drive Stormwater Project on August 26th at 6:00 p.m. You can find a link on the city's website to register to attend that meeting virtually, which is the preferred method of attendance, and also the council chambers will be available for those that would prefer to attend in person. There's also an informational public meeting on the West Lacy Road Reconstruction Project. That is happening on Tuesday, August 31st at 5:30 p.m. You can also register for that meeting virtually on the city's website, which again is the preferred method of attendance, and the council chambers will be available for those that wish to appear or attend in person. And then finally, thank you for bearing with me. The last item of note is a kind of a save-the-date informational item for the council members. The city of Fitchburg, in partnership with the city of Madison, will be hosting a public information session in regards to the Town of Madison absorption. That is going to be held September 15th at 6:00 p.m. That is likely going to be virtually, virtual only, although the details are still being worked out, and there will be a representative from Fitchburg attending that public information meeting in order to answer questions and/or direct those with questions to the appropriate resource in Fitchburg. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
That's all. There's a lot going on. Julia, question?
Yes, I want to know, Chad, what is the plan for the redistricting?
So there aren't any additional updates yet on that from what I shared two weeks ago at the council meeting. Basically, we are in the process of waiting for the county to redistrict from the county perspective. They were getting access to the maps, they said, August 31st. I know that some census data has been coming out here in the last week, so I don't know if that means the county will get access sooner rather than later, with the county providing their recommended map to us in mid-October, and then we have until November 5th to submit the city's redistrict maps. I know Alder, I'm sorry, Mayor Richardson has indicated there'll be an ad hoc committee created, and will look to work cooperatively with that committee to redistrict for Fitchburg, but obviously, at this point in time, there are no, there's no new updates. The timeline has been pretty well established for us.
All right, any other questions at all? All right, another one?
Question. So for, so it's gonna be the ad hoc committee? So when are you planning to select those members?
I'm gonna try and get ahold of people in the next week.
Okay.
I know, I just wanna verify timing with Tracy, so that I know, because it sounds like they're only gonna have about three weeks, and one of the people who I talked to last week, I wasn't exactly sure the dates, and the person said that their daughter is getting married in October, and so if it's one of, if that week is one of the three weeks we have, then this individual probably can't do it, because you're missing a third of the time. So I just need to verify those dates with Tracy tomorrow afternoon, and then I'll verify the people can actually participate during those weeks that we have, because it's gonna be a quick turnaround, and I'm sure they'll have a lot of meetings during that time, so if they're not free, if they're out of town or something like that, then unfortunately, you probably not be a good candidate for that.
So will it be a public participation too in this process?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity. It's gonna come to, well, I shouldn't say plenty, this is three weeks. You know, we can't drag this out. We have to have it done by November 5th, I believe.
Okay.
And one of the things I actually need to talk to Tracy about is, you know, are we gonna have to have a special council meeting to approve it? Because if we approve it at council meeting, it has to be done by November 5th. That really means that it has to be the week before that, which is our council meeting. So we might need to do a special council meeting just to essentially approve those maps as well. So there's a few things, as we're getting all this information from the county and from the state, that are making it challenging for sure for us, but you know, the, all the meetings are, I believe, are open to the public. Obviously, we're gonna be discussing it in public as well, and people can come in, and you know, as soon as we have, you know, the idea is that they give us three options, and I believe also a preference of those three. As soon as we have those three options, you know, we wanna try to get those out to the public so that people can provide feedback on what they like and don't like, and you know, what they think about that. But it's unfortunately a quick turnaround. It's a lot quicker than I'd like it to be. We're supposed to have two months, which is still way too fast of a turnaround, really, I think, for as important as this is, but because of all the delays in getting the information, they're cutting it more than half, which is unfortunate, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I have a, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Is, given that Town of Madison will be absorbed after redistricting is finished, will that leave the possibility of a lopsided district, or a few lopsided districts?
It will have a lopsided district, yeah. I would imagine that there'll probably be a plan for which district that those people go into, but whatever district that is, or I doubt it would be in two different districts, because you wanna try and keep neighborhoods together, but that district will immediately have about 1,500 more people, so.
How many more?
About 1,500 people live there.
1,500.
Yeah. Yep, so unfortunately, it will be a little bit bigger. But you can't take that into account either, which is the other frustrating part, is that we know, you know, next October, we're getting all these people, but we can't adjust for that now, which is unfortunate. All right.
I have a question, and it's completely off the topic right now, but I do have to get back to work. My mom, Chris Appleby, has invited me to this city council meeting regarding her house, and I just wanted to know what process or what steps are you guys gonna go through? Because I would like to say my part regarding her home and, you know, the condition of her house right now. Like I said, I do have to get back to work, so I was just wondering about how long this would, this meeting would take?
It's hard to estimate. That's gonna be the last thing on the agenda. I imagine it's gonna be, it's at least an hour, I would say, from now. It could be longer than that, but it's hard to really know because of discussion on some of the other items. And there's not, there's a number of things that are getting postponed tonight, so the agenda's not too terrible, but Chad, do you have?
Contact information, we could.
Would it be okay if I just say my part really quickly and just get back to work? I just wanted to be here to just say a few things on her behalf, and then I do have to get back. Would that be okay? Or would I just have to wait at another time?
I believe, hopefully, our city attorney is paying attention. I know she's online, though she doesn't have her camera on. I, this is, it's a little bit of a unique situation, which I, all good she is on. Thank you, Valerie.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. You know, as the chair of the meeting, I think you can certainly take this as a comment, if you want to do that, out of turn. I guess I would just point out that the homeowner has a right to participate in this proceeding. She has the right to present evidence and to ask questions of city staff that will be presenting their case. That said, if she doesn't, if she chooses not to participate at this time, unless the council decides to continue this matter to another date, this may be, this hearing may be her only opportunity to present her case. So that said, I would leave it in the chair's discretion if, if Mr. Mayor, you wanna take some comments, and I think, I don't see a problem with doing that. I get, like I said, the concern that I would have, that the homeowner may wish to participate more than just making a comment at the beginning of a meeting, but that's ultimately up to the homeowner to decide and her family.
Valerie, this isn't the homeowner, this is the homeowner's daughter that wants, wishes to speak. I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
I think if she wants to make a statement under the non-agenda item, or just issue a statement, you can certainly have her be heard.
Okay, and then, like anything, be the three-minute limit, like we do for everything else? Okay, all right. Yes.
Gabriella had a comment.
Oh, Gabriella, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say, if Ms. Appleby has to leave too, I don't know if she would want to record a video on her phone and email to us, we could watch it as an alternate to having this, this agenda item move up to now. Just a thought.
We're not gonna move the agenda item up, but we can have, I think it's May Appleby at least on the screen there. If she wants to speak right now, we can do that. Just a reminder that you do have three minutes for people in the public, so yes, you can go ahead and do that now.
Okay, so first off, I wanted to start off by saying thank you to everyone who came to attend today's meeting. Just a little bit about my backstory, I guess. I had moved into my mom's house October of 2010. Since then, me and our family had never experienced her house in the condition that it is today. So we had, when I was growing up, we had a lot of space to run around and play with our pets, and you know, we had family nights, movie nights, and spent holidays at home. Since about two years ago, when she had a friend move into her house, we had started to avoid, avoiding seeing my mom at beside, at home, besides on her birthdays, and just because due to the recent condition of her home, you know, nobody really wanted to go there and see her. So it had taken about two years for it to go from a family home to the disaster that it looks like now. It breaks my heart to see my family home look like the house from a Hoarders TV show with only one aisle to walk through and absolutely no room for anything else. And not to mention that everyone in the neighborhood is aware of my mom's house because of its condition. It's no longer a home, and that's not fair to my mom at her age. She has worked tremendously hard to have a house of her own. And I know it breaks her heart to have to attend to a meeting like this today. I know this is something that she had never imagined she would have to do in her lifetime, but here we are. So what I plan to do to contribute to this in my part is to fix the current situation. I will be moving in to help my mom empty out the house and turn it into a home again. And we will be removing everything we are required to dispose of in order to meet stakeholders, and I will be hiring a group of cleaners to help us empty out the house and remove the current safety hazards in her home. I came here with solutions, because my mom is in potential of losing her home, and I just view that at her age as not an option. And I will stop at nothing for her to get back to her living and the rest of her years in peace. So I, I will be filing or helping her file for an eviction notice to get this woman that she had invited into her home to help her out, out of her home. She is the main cause of the mess that's going on right now, and the hoarding and all of that, so we will be taking care of that legally and making sure that everything in her front yard, backyard, inside of the home is taken care of so she can, you know, get rid of those safety hazards and not have to walk in aisles anymore.
Ms. Appleby, unfortunately, that's the three minutes. I hate to have to do that, cut you off, but that we do limit the public participation. Your mom will have a chance, obviously, to speak more later, but unfortunately, I can, I need to stop there. Valerie, see, you popped your camera on. I just, that usually means that you wanted to say something? Oh, no.
I think if we, if we wanna provide Ms. Appleby a brief opportunity to wrap up her statement, or as the alder suggested, send in a message that we can play if she's not available.
Okay, yeah, so if you'd like to either send in a video or maybe an email, something in the next, you know, hour, hour and a half, we can also have that as well, Ms. Appleby.
Could we give her another minute or so to speak? I'd like to hear what she has to say.
We can't make, as soon as we start making exceptions for that, then everyone's gonna want an exception. I realize it's an unfortunate situation, but.
I would say, generally speaking, three minutes is our rule, and that's been the practice. I think if the council wishes to vote and suggest to offer more time, that's certainly the prerogative, if you wish to do that. I think that would require.
I vote to give her another minute and a half.
Hold on, hold on. We have to follow Robert's rules, so Valerie, I just wanna understand, so if someone could make a motion to extend the period, would you, would they, would you want to do it for a specific number of time, or how would that work?
I think it would probably, in the interest of clarity for everybody, it would make sense to specify a time, and then I suppose if she's still not done and the council wanted to provide additional time, you could do that, but perhaps Ms. Appleby knows how much more time she would like, and she can indicate that.
Joe, would you like to do a motion?
Yeah, I move to give May Appleby a minute and a half.
Second.
All right, cited by Gabriella. All in favor of giving May Appleby an extra minute and a half, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, go ahead, Ms. Appleby. You have another minute and a half.
I just wanted to finish off by saying I am here, like I said, with solutions. I will be helping her fix this problem. I have spoken with police and the Court of Madison as well to solve this solution, and how to legally take care of this as well, just to help my mom out, and so she doesn't have to lose her house. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say, for the record, that if Ms. Appleby wants to appear again during the course of the actual hearing, she's certainly welcome to do that on behalf of her mother, or obviously, her mother's, of course, afforded the opportunity as well. I just wanna make sure it's clear that this, this brief appearance wasn't the only opportunity that they have to speak.
Thank you, Valerie. All right, then moving along to the Plan Commission. Randy, go ahead.
Okay, first item is 7A Plan Commission 1, Comprehensive Plan CDP-2379-21. Plan Commission tabled it till October.
Are you moving to postpone?
Postponed.
You're making a motion to postpone?
I'm, I'm, yes.
Okay.
Motion to, motion to postpone.
All right, is there a second? Cited by Dave. Do you wanna speak to the postponement at all? You want me to?
Yeah, I'm just trying to recollect as to.
They're still working on a few things with Public Works. It's actually in, for two months. It's not for one month, and I know it's been delayed a couple times before, and they said that we're postponing it for two months, actually, and that will allow them enough time to finish. There's some challenges with the topography, and so that's what's kinda been holding them up a little bit. So they assure us that in a couple months, they will have all those things worked out with Public Works. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that was postponed. Next one.
Next one, a motion to postpone preliminary plat request PP-2395-21 until September, September timeframe.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Cited by Joe. You wanna speak to this one all?
Yeah, there are some, some issues with the, the road right-of-way and access into the O'Brien property if that line is, road right-of-way is expanded. Currently, there is a, the drive itself crosses the bike path, and Sonya is working on obtaining an easement, so.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that was postponed. Next one.
A motion to approve Resolution R-168-21, Resolution approving certified survey map. Request CSETJ-2379-21 by Tom Jacob. Request CSETJ two-three-seven-nine dash two-one by Tom Jacobs, agent for Ski Lane Properties, to divide property associated with two-seven-three-three and two-seven-four-seven Ski Lane, Town of Madison.
Is there a second? Signed by Dave, and did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved, yes.
All right, would you like to talk about what this is?
Yeah, uh, the applicant is requesting approval, certified survey map, uh, to subdivide property along Ski Lane, Town of Madison. Uh, the land is within the city's ETJ area and, uh, therefore the city has, uh, re, has review of this land division request. Uh, the CSM would create three lots, two lots would have existing single-family homes and one lot would be vacant.
All right, any questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that is approved, uh, next one.
Uh, motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash O dash one-six. Uh, RZ dash two-three-nine-six dash twenty-one zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ dash two-three-nine-six dash twenty-one by Robert Proctor, agent for McSkill and Trade, to rezon property associated with fifty-two fifteen Barona Road from the IS, uh, Industrial Specialized District to B dash P, which is Business Professional District to allow for vocational school use, Lot One, CSM one-five-five-zero-one.
Is there a second? Signed by Julia, did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
Would you, we have two people that are here to speak, would you like them to speak to it or would you like to...
Yeah.
...first? All right, we have both Robert Proctor and John McKenzie here, go ahead and tell us what's going on here.
Yep, so, uh, John McKenzie's the owner of the property and this was his, uh, brainchild. And I think one thing we talked about after the Planning Commission meeting that he said that really stuck with me. John, who's had an incredible career, said this is probably the most important thing I've done in my professional life and, and that's how important it's to, um, John and the Madison Area Builders Association and the Girls and Boys Club have come together to create a vocational school for young people to learn the trades, to carpentry, masonry, all of the different trades to, to fill that need that exists right now in our community and in Fitchburg, but also more importantly in their lives. Uh, the, the children, uh, the young people that will come through this program will be people that will then be able to be hired in very good-paying jobs. They will learn financial responsibility, entrepreneurship. Uh, it will be, uh, administered by the Boys and Girls Club. They will be in charge of the program with a lot of help from the Madison Area Builders Association and John and also many of the trade unions, uh, the carpenters' assoc- union and the operators' unions have already, uh, expressed a lot of interest in it. Uh, as part of the project to tell you how much momentum it has, everybody working on it is volunteering their time and it's raised almost ten million dollars already to the project. It's, uh, as the Planning Commission has determined, it's already, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, but I think it's also important that it's consistent and promotes the city of Fitchburg's motion Economic Development Strategy Plan, which is to enhance economic centers, build places and strengthen neighborhoods, build on Fitchburg's identify, identity and brand and sense of community and cultivate an inclu- inclusive culture and improve access and opportunities and leverage location, innovate and collaborate. It's like this is just perfectly fits into the planning of Fitchburg. Um, so many of the, I've been here a lot at so many meetings and so many of the issues that you address, it seems to be, um, to fit exactly what so many here are looking for and clearly I know John, who's here to answer questions and the Boys and Girl, Girls Club are, we're just incredibly proud and happy to bring this forward and, and this is the one step, so, we'd ask that you approve it.
John, would you like to add anything?
Um, no, it's hard to add something to, Robert, it's great summation of what we're, we're after here, but I, I will add just two things. First of all, um, it's been amazing the support that we've gotten in the business community and, and, and generally. So, I guess Robert's not up to speed, today we got another one and a half million dollar commitment. Amazing, I mean, everybody nods their heads, everybody gets it, everybody understands. The one other thing I just wanna say, and I, this is from the bottom of my heart, I'm really glad this is in Fitchburg. Um, I, I've gotta say, you know, from the mayor to the staff, uh, to the elected officials, the Plan Commission, everybody in Fitchburg government understands how important this is, appreciates it and we really feel like we've got a partner in you, so thank you, I just want you to know, I appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, uh, questions, comments from Council Dave?
Uh, when do, when do you anticipate, uh, the first students? Uh, you know, I have a lot in my district that, uh, that need this and...
Yeah.
I've been, I've been talking it up, I haven't been able to give them a, you know, approximate date that, you know, we could, we could start enrolling.
Thank you for talking it up. Um, I think, uh, we're gonna try to time it with the school year next year. So, we're full speed, um, design is pretty well established and now we're trying to find out how much in-kind we can get from the Builders Association members and I think quite a bit, I, I'm really amazed at how they're stepping up. Uh, we'll probably start some demolition and, and, um, asbestos removal work in the next month or so. I would think the main body of construction probably right after the first of the year.
Other questions or comments? Julia.
So, no, I want to thank you for, you know, for investing in the city of Fitchburg and thank you for, I think this is great for us to have this center, uh, it's the first one, too many to come, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Gabriella?
Yeah, I'll just echo that, that I'm excited to have this in Fitch, Fitchburg and happy that, um, we get to start moving this forward and I look forward to seeing the project unfold.
Excellent.
I will add, just I mentioned in the Plan Commission, this has gotten national attention. This is the first partnership, well, we came up with the idea of attaching a National Association of Home Builder member, MABA, with the Boys and Girls Club. It's a really powerful connection. And this week, um, the nationals of both of these organizations are discussing using this as a pilot project nationally. And I just, I think it's absolutely amazing that this could start in Fitchburg and could ripple across the nation, what an impact this is gonna make in changing lives.
All right, I know, I've been very excited about this project since I heard about it, so, I don't think, say anything else? So, uh, hopefully would you just go to a vote and all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is approved, thank you both. All right, uh, anything else that you have, Randy?
Uh, no.
All right.
Not for plan.
Then we can go to Public Works and Dave, go ahead.
I move approval amended resolution R one-fourty-nine twenty-one, resolution approving a typical section for the South Sine Reconstruction Project from Aurora Avenue to West Clayton Road. Again, this is an amended, amended resolution.
All right, is there a second? Oh, I need a second first.
I second, but I am...
Julia, yep, I'll clarify in a second here. All right, so I know that Public Works approved it as amended. Now TTC, I believe, approved it as originally presented though and did not change it, correct?
Yes, and I would prefer to discuss an amendment separately if we're going to consider that.
Well, but we could essentially remove the amendment, essentially, you can move to there. So, hold on, we gotta go through this first. And then, uh, bike, uh...
Yes.
Like I said, you also approved it.
We, uh, we did, we approved it but as originally, um, written, not amended.
Okay, so the, so just for clarification, right now, the motion is the changed one because someone can make a motion to essentially remove that and put it back to what was approved by TTC and Bike Committee as well. So, that's an option that we have that we can do. Uh, I'd like to get the presentations, but do you have another question, Gabriella?
Yeah, so I mean, I would like to, I mean, I, I'd prefer to discuss the resolution as it exists to start and we can consider an amendment, but I, considering the fact that multiple committees did not approve this as amended, I, I'm kind of uncomfortable with the discussion started with the amended version. Can I make a motion to remove that amendment?
I, I'd like to at least have it presented first and then I can have you on the agenda first so that we can ask, we have, uh, presenters here to speak to it, so then we can do that. Instead of getting into the, I wanna muddy it up before we even find out what's going on here, so, um, would, Dave, would you like Sam? We have Sam Herheim from KAL Engineering here, would you like her to present?
No, I can, I can present.
You wanna speak to it, okay?
Uh, the Board of Public Works voted four to zero to amend the, to remove the two-foot bike lane, uh, on this design based on the following, the previous road, Lacy Road, we were told about large amount of trucks. This road does not have that. Uh, the cars being too big, as we move towards electric cars, cars are smaller. Uh, there is no TIF on this. The other one, you know, we, it was approved, we had a small, you know, it would be a small amount to the taxpayers. Here we're looking at a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars to have that. Uh, the, what approved by the Board of Public Works is wide enough, uh, to get us stalled. If a vehicle was stalled, uh, traffic could still continue. Uh, this is, uh, less cost. We hear much about we're gonna be protecting the environment, making a wider road does not protect the environment. It also impacts global warming. Also, we have less stormwater if we have a, uh, narrower road and less cost for future maintenance. We have a safe design with a more than adequate bike ped path on the side. If bikers choose to ride in the paved shoulder, I, I think they can safely do it. Uh, but we've, we've proposed, Board of Public Works proposed a cost-effective road that will meet the city's needs well into the future. And as many residents in my district have said, I have many retired people, we're on a fixed income. You know, the, the, uh, we think that your other alders, uh, must have alder, must have money trees in their backyard. Direct comment from, from one of my, uh, residents. Trying to find somewhere to cut some costs and this will provide a safe road. The arguments used on Lacy, uh, are not necessarily valid on this one.
All right, Andrew, can you actually kinda run down the project for us? That's what I was kinda hoping for there is what's going on here and what was presented originally?
Sure, yeah, definitely. And I'll just share my screen, 'cause I, so I help, always helps a little for me to talk off something. Uh, can you guys see that okay? Okay, awesome. So, uh, yeah, just getting everybody back up to speed, so, these are the project limits. We're talking about Aurora up to now, West Clayton, uh, now that northern portion is in Phase Two, um, as part of a CIP amendment. Uh, so we did do a lot of public outreach on this, just kinda heads up, with the start back in February, uh, we, we've done, um, we did an initial meeting then, sixty-two responses in the survey, two meetings after that with residents specifically on, kind of, the most contentious, uh, portion of the project and then seven additional meetings after that. And if you'd like to, you know, uh, attend any of those small group meetings, feel free to, uh, email me. Uh, the existing cross-section is eleven-foot travel lanes, it's kind of a rural cross-section with these three to four-foot paved shoulders, no curb and gutter. Um, there is an existing eight to ten-foot multi-use path on the west side, it jogs around historic property there in the courthouse, but by and large, it's kind of just west of the existing roadway. There's a sidewalk on the east side for the majority, so we're looking north, we're kinda standing on the corner looking north. Um, there's a sidewalk for the majority of the, the project limits on the east side and then there are drainage ditches along, uh, both sides. And so, our proposed cross-section, um, uh, does vary a little bit along the corridor, uh, but I'll note, uh, you know, by and large, we're talking about cross-section B. Um, you know, really the curb-to-curb stays the same throughout the, the corridor. We're just varying whether or not we wanna have curb and gutter and some of these more kind of rural sections, uh, away from, uh, um, residences and businesses, uh, that might cut costs and, uh, you know, might not really be necessary, especially where it's directly adjacent to, uh, BMPs. Uh, and then, um, we also have a, this section here that I talked about a little bit more, uh, and so that was very contentious after the public meeting. Uh, we do wanna bring that back to the public and clarify a few things because, uh, when I first presented it, uh, I don't think, I think a few things got lost in translation, so, we're gonna bring that back to the public and really that's this cross-section C that could be either terrace or parking on the east side. Um, and so that's really kind of the, the whole project in a nutshell. I'll note, this is what was originally proposed in the resolution, I'm just referencing cross-section B. Again, curb-to-curb is, is really the same, but, uh, including that's two-foot curb and gutter, uh, ten-foot travel lanes, five-foot bike lanes, that includes four foot on, of actual asphalt and one foot in the gutter pan. Painted buffers, uh, variable with terraces on either side of the roadway, a shared use path that's existing and a sidewalk that's generally existing on the east side. Um, we did get some feedback from the committees, so, just as mentioned, uh, it was approved in by committee, approved in TTC and then Board of Public Works, as, as Dave mentioned, um, removed the two-foot painted buffers or four-foot total. And just to, uh, clarify a few quick points, um, just, just, you know, in hopes of, uh, offering some more explanation. Uh, um, so, we did estimate a cost to be two-hundred-and-sixty thousand to construct, um, those two, two-foot buffers, so that one include basically a four feet of roadway space, um, out of our roughly, uh, you know, eight-point-five million dollar project. And, uh, you know, so the buffered bike lanes were included in this because it's consistent with our two-thousand-seventeen bike and pedestrian plan, um, that would, would recommend either, um, you know, buffered bike lanes or a buffered bike lanes and a shared use path depending upon if it's existing conditions or future. Um, generally speaking, and we have lots of examples that I can share if you would like, we'd like to include five-foot, uh, bike lanes adjacent to ten-foot travel lanes, so, a total of fifteen feet, so that can shift a little bit. But there are not examples in Fitchburg that I'm aware of that a adjacent travel lane and bike lane are, you know, are combined with less than fifteen feet. So typically, we have eleven-foot travel lanes, four-foot bike lanes, total fifteen feet. In this case, we'd like to, um, you know, one of the greatest desires of the residents is to keep speeds low. Right now, there's, we have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit and there is concernable speeding. So, we're trying everything we can to keep speeds low and one of those treatments are to use ten-foot travel lanes, um, to, to narrow the lanes, uh, you know, to, to do some tropical man. So, that combined with, we like to keep that at fifteen feet, so I would recommend if we do end up removing the buffers that we would increase the bike lane width to five feet, just to give us that fifteen-foot total. Um, and then under that condition, obviously, it would, uh, result in a hundred and thirty thousand, um, dollar savings, so. I'll also note, trucks, we did get, uh, truck percentage is a four percent, that's, that's double our typical two percent that we see on most roads. Firehouse Three is located on the corridor and fire trucks are a little bit larger. And then, uh, you know, our small group of roughly fifteen residents is generally in favor, I will not say it's unanimous, but generally that's in favor of buffered bike lanes. And with that, uh, I'm happy to answer questions, but hopefully that was a good...
All right, uh, we have some citizen comments here, but before we do that, just one clarification for, if you could, Andrew. Uh, the, what was proposed as a typical cross-section, was that the same as what's, what we approved on Lacy Road? Now, the, the sidewalk, I guess, is not on Lacy Road at this point, that's something that, as it develops, we're gonna require, but other than that, is that, is it the same thing that we propose or approved, I should say, on West Lacy?
Um, I can double-check, I believe it's very similar, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, first I have Samantha Herheim from KAL Engineering to speak. And then after that, Steve Arnold.
Thanks for having me, um, I, Andrew actually covered everything really well and so, um, I'll just hang out for questions or comments. Um, but thanks, Andrew, for, for your great summary.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I also have, uh, Steve Arnold, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, may I share my screen?
I believe, yeah, you can.
So, um, I would like to start out by answering the question about, um, Lacy Road. Uh, these are pictures I took Monday. Uh, Lacy Road is in the middle and Lacy Road is the same as is proposed in the original resolution, except Lacy Road has one foot, uh, sorry, six-inch curb tops and two-foot gutter pans. Down below, um, some of the elements are a little bit wider on Fahy Glenn's new extension, but that shows the kind of curb and gutter that are proposed in the original resolution. One foot curb top and one foot of gutter pan. This saves, this kind of gutter, curb and gutter... This saves, this kind of gutter, curb and gutter saves one foot on each side already. So that has already, uh, helped, uh, narrow the roadway for some of the environmental reasons that Public Works was concerned about. I just wanted to say, um, at the top is Fish Hatchery Road behind my house, uh, the typical two, two, uh, two-lane section. Uh, it has, uh, four-foot bike lanes and eleven-foot lanes. So it's relatively more similar to what Public Works is proposing, except Public Works is proposing ten-foot lanes and four-foot asphalt, one foot, uh, gutter pan. Um, and we think that that's too narrow. Really, what you have, the choice is the, the Lacy Road configuration or ten-foot bike lanes, ten-foot travel lanes and, uh, five-foot bike lanes. Or ten-foot travel lanes, two-foot buffers and four-foot bike lanes, which are two feet wider in total. The advantage of having the buffers, besides giving more space between motor vehicles, uh, and the bikes, is that the, the, um, buffers actually calm traffic. If you look at driver behavior on the section of Fish Hatchery Road that I'm showing, uh, and particularly up the hill, uh, from Lacy Road up toward the, uh, top of the hill to the south. Drivers frequently just use the bike lane and the through lane as one big lane. Uh, they drive on the bike lane, uh, on the fog line so much that they're wearing it away. Uh, the buffered bike lanes don't have that, they are, uh, the buffers are more apparent to drivers. And so they are, uh, much harder for drivers to ignore. And if you look at people going over the hill on Lacy Road between the community center and Sine, uh, you will see that the drivers stay within the travel lane. So I think it's very important for traffic calming and for bicycle safety. The last point I'll make is that Si, South Sine Road is the main way north to Post Road and, and Sine Road, uh, to the Fish Hatchery, uh, commercial corridor.
Steve, I need to cut you off, I'm sorry, but thank you very much. Uh, I do have one other written comment, uh, that was submitted by Andrew Potts from Pittsburgh, registering in support. And, uh, comments to approve resolution R one forty-nine twenty-one is approved by the Bicycle Committee and the Transportation and Transit Committee. And so that's what I have for public. I will go to Gabriella, who I believe has a motion she'd like to make. Oh, we can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, muted. I'd like to move to remove the amendment, and I'm actually not opposed to discussing the amendment, but I think we should start with the resolution. Um, as stated, because this amendment is not, uh, was not agreed upon across all the.
Moving to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I gotta get a second first. All right.
Second.
Sent by Joe, uh, would you like to speak more to it, Gabriella?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it, I, I think the, you know, there's obviously disagreement amongst the committees, um, about what we should be done, but I don't think we should be voting on. I guess in my opinion, when we move an amendment, move a resolution as amended, that indicates that that amendment was well-agreed upon throughout all of the discussion. And that's not true for this particular situation, so, um, I would move to remove it.
All right, further comments about the, really the amendment, but again, it's probably germane to any piece of it. So right now, the, there's an amendment to essentially put the bike buffers back in and to put it back to the original amendment. Um, so you can speak, Julia.
Yeah, so I, I will support the amendment to, uh, to keep the, the two-foot, uh, painted bike lanes. Um, I think we need to be consistent with our, um, you know, uh, design. Um, if we look at the City of Pittsburgh Bike, Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan two thousand seventeen, in page ninety-five, there is a table where is, uh, it shows what are the elements that this corridor should have. Uh, so we need to be consistent. Um, I, this is what I mentioned when I also approved for Lacy Road, I wanna be consistent with my vote. I wanna be consistent following the plan that the city put in place, that it was developed by expert engineer. I'm gonna follow the recommendation of our staff and our engineers that are here. So, um, so the other thing I want to mention is, um, uh, you know, I know that some people want to remove some, a couple of hundred thousand dollars because it's gonna increase the project, this is an eight-point-five million dollar road, we are designing this road for the future. Uh, so, uh, we need to add all those ele- element and also two hundred and sixty thousand dollar in an eight-point-five million dollar. When it's safety, safety doesn't have a price for me. Um, so, and also you mentioned, Dave, that, uh, we need to be consider the impact of the environment. So if we add this, uh, safety element for the bike, more people are gonna bike than use a car. So, um, so I am totally in favor to, uh, to keep the, the two-foot, uh, painted bike lanes.
All right, further comments? Yeah, Gabriella.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that, that, you know, three hundred and, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of eight-point-five-eight million is three percent of the total cost of the project. And if you actually do what Andrew suggested, is that we actually have to widen the travel lanes if you remove those two-foot bike bu- buffers. A hundred and thirty thousand is one-point-five percent of the project's costs. That's, uh, in the grand scheme of things, that's not gonna save people tax money. There's a lot of things we can do in the budget to save money, and I welcome those conversations, I actually look forward to those conversations at, at budget time. But this is not the place to skimp and go against our long-term planning documents in terms of how this goes. And yes, there's not as much truck, truck traffic on this road, but there is more truck traffic than average, four percent versus an average road is two percent. And ultimately, like, uh, and I said this is the Lacy Road, I think that, you know, ultimately what we vote here today can determine, you know, whether or not someone gets, gets hurt or killed down the line because they're not traveling in a safe travel lane. And just as a quick comment about climate change, I mean, climate change is a very complex issue. And encouraging safe bike infrastructure so that people can actually commute by bike versus car is a good way to reduce emissions, um, which is also a climate change initiative. So yes, everything has, has, has ups and downs, but it's not just so, so simple as reducing pavement, uh, is the best thing for environment. There's, there's a lot of complexity and, and nuance to, to that issue.
Very brief, uh, there's one of us on this council rides his bike to work every day, uh, rides all over Pittsburgh, rides on roads in Pittsburgh with a, a, a paved shoulder, Seminole Highway, My Street, many, many. The safety, your, your safety risk, the largest one is debris in the bike lane. I, I, I can't emphasize, emphasize that enough. If the, the lens of every decision we make, someone could get killed, um, you know, we might as well open the, open the checkbook. I, there's no guarantee of anything in life. The safety of this, completely safe if you're over on the bike ped path, that's the safe, safe route. I probably won't ride it, I would be on the road, but, um, that's a risk I would be willing to take, as are the other experienced bicyclists that belong to Bike Pittsburgh. I think this gives us a good design that, uh, uh, keeps our costs down and respects many other things, thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I think when we're making, um, decisions like this, we should rely on data and, um, not, um, what's the word? Um, losing it, but sort of like personal examples, cause I mean, I bike too. And I know that's a, a reality as well, but at the same time, if, if we developed a plan around bicycle and pedestrian use, we had engineers, um, review this, including city staff. Um, and, you know, we're, we're making decisions about our roads based on either population projections or, um, you know, based on strategic documents that we have, that, that we should honor that. And if we adjust it or change it or, or, or make adjustments, it should be also based on similar data.
All right. Anything else, or is we can vote on the amendment anyway, piece to it? Seeing nothing, uh, we will vote on the amendment, which is to put the two-foot painted bike buffers back into the resolution. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, I believe the ayes have it. Uh, so we are on the main motion now, which is now amended, so it does have the painted bike buffers and open to more discussion or questions if people have anything else they'd like to say. All right, don't see anything, so we can go ahead and vote on now the amended resolution, which is to have the bike, bike buffers back in there. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, I do believe the ayes have it, and so that is approved. All right, thank you everyone for being here. And we can move on to the next item, uh, Dave.
Move approval of resolution R one fifty-two dash twenty-one, a resolution approving public water main and sanitary sewer easement in Lot One of Sunflower Estates.
Sent by Julia, did Public Works approve?
So this, this was something that's been known since the, it was, is plotted, we weren't quite sure where this.
Oh, first, did you approve it though?
I, I moved approval in.
Yeah, but Public, they just wanna verify.
Yeah, they did approve it.
And Plan Commission approved as well.
Planning Commission did approve.
All right, now go ahead and explain it, there we go.
So this was, uh, this was known about early, we weren't quite sure where, where the water and sanitary sewer would be put through the property to serve, uh, some residents. And, uh, it was finally determined the best place, and so that, that's why we are requesting this, this easement. Uh, this has been known about, there's nothing controversial about this.
Excellent, any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that's approved, next one, Dave.
Uh, next is, uh, I move approval, resolution R one fifty-nine twenty-one, a resolution approving a subdivision improvement agreement with Pittsburgh Townhouses for public improvements along Notre Dame Drive.
Second.
Can I just clarify, are you moving to approve or postpone?
Uh, I'm moving to approve this, I believe. It's postponed, I'm sorry.
I believe this one's postponed based on what I was told earlier before the meeting.
Thank you, I didn't look at my old notes. So I would move, uh, a postponement of a resolution, um, R one fifty-nine dash twenty-one.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Randy, and do you wanna speak to it, or do you want Chad to speak to it?
Well, Chad could speak to it here.
All right, Chad.
Uh, staff indicated today that, uh, they're still in, in conversations with the developer and an agreement has not yet been reached. And therefore that's why the postponement has been requested.
All right, any questions? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that one's postponed, next one?
Next one, I'll move approval, resolution R one sixty dash twenty-one, a resolution approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the USONA certified survey map.
Uh, actually, are you sure about that?
What's my agenda here?
Rumor has it that you're postponing actually this one and the next one as well.
Rumor has it, then I guess rumor is correct. I would move, I would move, um, postponement of resolution R one sixty dash twenty-one.
Sent by Julia, uh, Chad, you wanna speak to?
Yes, that's also in the same, uh, situation as the previous, uh, resolution. Staff continues to have conversations with, uh, the developer on this one.
All right, questions on this one? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, got one more.
I'll move postponement of resolution R one sixty-three dash twenty-one, resolution approving an agreement for subdivision improvements in the plot of Riverside.
Is there a second? Sent by Randy, got in there, uh, should you wanna speak to this, or you want Chad to?
Chad can speak to this.
Yeah, a second.
Why can't you say that it was approved in Bo- Board of Public Works?
Uh, Chad can speak to this.
Okay.
I have notes that is, needs to be postponed.
Yeah, in, in, uh, department head meeting today, I was informed by staff that that should be postponed because there's still, uh, ongoing conversations with the developer on this one as well. And they're still waiting for, uh, a reply from the developer.
Can, can I get those notes, uh, on that chain? A little at disadvantage, okay.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that one's postponed, anything else you wanna postpone, Dave?
Oh.
Okay.
Maybe the rest of this meeting.
All right, uh, so that the last thing we're gonna postpone tonight. Uh, Park Commission, Julia.
No report, um, we are meeting September second.
All right, and Library Board, I believe is J, so he's gone, uh, Commission on Asian Mall.
So I'd like to move approval, resolution R one forty dash twenty-one, addendum to senior, uh, Centers Dane County contract.
Sent by Julia, and the Commission on Asian Mall approve?
Yes.
All right, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and we are the council, uh, do you wanna speak to this?
I, I can, so there's a, a program, uh, essentially the, um, they'll be having, uh, ability to have lunch at Hy-Vee, uh, once a month. And the county is, uh, supplying a grant of, uh, ten thousand nine hundred for that. And when people eat, they can make a, they can make a donation for that. And if they do, that money will come back and be returned to the, to the county. So it's initiative to encourage, um, you know, healthy eating amongst their seniors at a reasonable, reasonable price. We can't have, uh, we're not gonna have community meals here for quite some time yet, so, um, everyone, I think this is a great, uh, great initiative.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that is approved, uh, anything else on Commission on Asian Mall?
Uh, I would just add, um, you know, this needs to be on our agenda, and I mentioned it last time. Large number of senior units going in within, not very far from here, but, uh, we, we need to discuss transportation. Find a way to get these people, get these seniors to where the services are here. I, I think it's a, it's, at some point, Mr. Mayor, we need to convene an ad hoc or something brainstorm and, and, uh, uh, get ahead of this, get ahead of this tsunami here.
All right, uh, moving along to RCC, Gabriella.
No report, our next meeting is September fifteenth.
All right, uh, let's see, how about Transportation and Transit?
Yeah, hang on, just let me pull up the resolution.
Yeah, I know that, uh.
It's gonna be postponed.
Yeah, I know.
Resolution R one forty-four twenty-one, authorizing acceptance of the fabrication and installation of exterior weight finding signage project bid to the September fourteenth meeting.
Second motion.
All right, sent by Dave, and do you wanna speak to it, or you want me to speak to it? While you're postponing.
Um, you can go ahead.
Yeah, uh, CETA meets this week, and we thought CETA was gonna meet before this meeting, and that's why, it was originally, we thought we'd be ready to vote tonight. But we want, to make sure CETA has a chance to speak to that, and they will not have a meet until Thursday, so we're just gonna wait, so for them to get a chance. All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that's postponed, anything else for TTC?
Yeah, we had, um, actually quite a long meeting, we discussed, um, a few things. One thing we talked about a little bit was the, the Transportation Department's trying to work on, uh, prioritizing bicycle pedestrian crossings that are at issues in the city, uh, to figure out like how we can fund mitigations to, to solve some of those problems. Um, so they're really trying to get a sense of, based on, we have data from, you know, police reports and actual accidents and things of that nature of which intersections are, are riskier, but I do think that it'd be worthwhile for the council to weigh in. Um, I don't actually have that map to show you right now, but I, I'm gonna ask that Andrew sends it out, maybe we can get some council feedback on it so that, um, we can see if there's any intersection that you know, based on your interactions with your constituents, um, should be prioritized. So I can send that out, or have Andrew send that out to, to the council, um, to get some feedback. So I can send that out, or have Andrew send that out to, to the council, um, to get some feedback to him directly. And then, we also discussed, uh, Madison Metro for quite a while, um, their, their network design study has been released. Um, the thing that we've been talking about for, for quite a while now, um, and so there, at some point, we're gonna need to have, make some sort of recommendation of the, how we ru- might ru- routes to change in Fitchburg, um, so that's coming. And then at the same time, there's this intersecting issue of the budget, um, for Madison Metro and how that's changing for partners, and they've been working on a, on a solution for that, um, so there's a lot of problems that are coming to a head all at the same time, and that over the next, like, between December and March, there'll probably be a lot of decisions that have to be made about Metro. Um, so, at the next Transportation Transit meeting in September, we have a plan to kinda have a more in-depth discussion about Madison Metro, um, and hopefully get some representatives, some measures to come and talk about their plans and what they're willing to share, and hopefully, I think it's almost fully public at this point, um, so that we can get a lot out on the table, and then hopefully we can maybe have a, a coun- council conversation in some way, um, prior to us making those decisions. I also would love to see a public hearing in advance to any of these decisions being made, um, but there's a lot of intersecting things, we had a long conversation about this, but I hope to have like a, a really more detailed report for you, um, after our September meeting. And I can also send out that video of the meeting so you can get some more information about Metro, so that we can start having these really important conversations about public transit. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, uh, next up, Seda, Julia?
Oh, um, so we are meeting this coming Thursday, uh, August twenty-sixth.
Alright.
Oh, it's, um, combined meeting with, um, housing?
Oh, housing committee?
Community, yeah.
Excellent, alright, uh, Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Ag and Rural Affairs, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash twelve. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-two zoning ordinance to amend Article five relative to permitted and conditional uses in agricultural zoning districts, section twenty-two through six zero five, relative to developments requiring design review, and section twenty-two dash six five one, uh, relative to agricultural and entertainment and rural event venue definitions. And, uh, this was postponed for the July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Joe, and did Ag and Rural Affairs approve?
Yes, we did.
And Plan Commission?
Yes.
Alright, uh, do you wanna speak to this, what this is, do you want, I don't see any staff online, we can have, make Chad try and do it, or I can as well.
Do you wanna touch on it first, Chad, and, um, maybe I can pick up on it as well, or do you want me to?
And we do have one public comment after this.
I can give it a shot, uh, here, I just pulled up the referral sheet, it did mention that the Plan Commission had approved with some minor language changes, uh, which were highlighted in the, in the attached referral sheet, um, nothing, uh, I guess substantive from my perspective on it, but ultimately, this, uh, the changes in this ordinance allow for uh, rural ag zoning districts, it's updating the allowable land uses, uh, for those ag districts, and also, uh, creates the ability to have a rural event venue, uh, under certain conditions as well. Uh, Mayor, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to, to add to, to that?
I know another thing that they made sure to put in there is that if someone does do some kind of rural events, that they follow all of our liquor licensing rules and regulations, and they would have to get the right permits if they're gonna do, you know, that, that was a concern that we talked about, so we wanna make sure that it follows all of that, which it does. Um, but otherwise, it's really, you know, just trying to encourage that agricultural and tourism, agricultural business a little bit, uh, making sure that it's kinda done in a safe way, and, uh, in the correct way, and following our, kind of our goals and guidelines. I do have one public comment, Steve, did you wanna speak to this?
No, uh, well, I can just read what I sent you, um, yeah, I s- would speak, uh, on behalf of myself only in support of this, or on behalf of myself and my wife, and, um, I believe that it's uh, very consistent and well-aligned with the comprehensive plan, and with our, uh, vision for the economic development for the city, so I do urge, uh, support of this, um, ordinance change.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I ask?
Alright, uh, so yeah, questions, comments, Julia, go ahead.
So, um, so we are doing this to allow my, more wedding barns, um, in the, in the city, you know, so what? So, who was behind that, it was like us, there are more business coming, or?
So it's not just wedding barns, but that's one of the big things that we see. There are some people who have been interested in the city, who own some land. It's also, uh, looked at as another way for the people who own land in rural Fitchburg to essentially, I won't say profit off their land, but another way to utilize their land besides farming, and is they're looking for other ways to utilize their land if they, they don't wanna farm anymore, no one in their farm, family wants to farm anymore, it is another option for them, and just wanna make sure that it's done the right way. Yeah, Randy?
I just would comment, uh, further on, on that, Julia, is that it, we discussed this for well over six months, and it, 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 it went back and forth, we even talked about using an existing facility, um, we ran into some problems with that, uh, you know, hay storage, or farm equipment, or machinery, um, you know, type of safety concerns. Um, but I think the, the important point that we touched on it is that we maintain some type of agricultural presence as far as the architectural style, keeping, keeping that flavor, for lack of better words, so.
Uh, Joe, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of questions I had were sort of addressed by folks, but, um, if I understand correctly, at some point, you pretty much couldn't do anything, you know, zoning-wise, um, that was not like directly related to farming or residential, um, and this is allowing, you know, some level of flexibility uh, here, is that, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. I support that.
Other questions, concerns, yeah, Julia?
Thank you, which are the limitation in this ordinance?
Oh boy, do I, where are some of the limitations, I, I mean, the, it needs to have a connection to rural ag.
Yeah.
Um, oh, it's in the packet, Chad's blown up for me, what page is that?
Five sixty-five, okay.
Yeah, I just actually clicked on the, uh, the, um, supporting document.
Okay.
Uh, in the link to the agenda is where I actually have it. So, I can, I mean, if you want me to read.
Sure.
Rural event venue, I can. Uh, minimum lot size shall be three acres, maximum lot size shall be ten, uh, with some exceptions. Venue shall be part of a farm defined herein, um, new building shall house one or more of the following uses, agricultural, entertainment, retail establishments, not including roadside stands, restaurants, uh, any class or drinking places for the sale of raw, processed, or value-added agricultural products produced primarily on the farm operation on site, uh, two-hundred-foot open buffer shall be provided on all sides of the property, uh, vent activities are not permitted within this area. I'm, I'm paraphrasing here, uh, just for the interest of time. Buffer planning shall be provided along the property line, uh, where there is an abutting residence, screen views, lights, and noise. Uh, increase in traffic generated by the venue shall not create a nuisance to nearby residents by way of traffic, noise, or significant increases in parking on public ways. Parking may be either gravel or paved as determined by the Plan Commission, overflow parking on grass or hay areas is permissible. Uh, parking of any type should not be located in the required buffer area or within any other setbacks. Signage and sight lighting shall comply with city ordinances. Structures shall meet fire code standards for public assembly and shall be inspected by the fire inspector prior to occupancy. Fireworks displays on site are permitted only following issuance of, uh, proper permit. Amplified music and dancing are permitted only within the venue as part of the conditional use permit. Outside amplified music is permitted by sound permit per existing ordinance issued prior to events. Uh, sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages are subject to the city's licensing requirements. Uh, there are some accessory uses.
I think the biggest thing is you can't just open a restaurant, or a bar, or a Walmart, or something like that, it's really, like event, the wedding venue type of vent, venue is gonna be the big thing, but also something like if you bend to Sassy Cow Creamery in Sun Prairie, that'd be a fantastic thing. That'll have something like that as well, so it's trying to do, you know, things like that, yeah, go ahead.
Last question, but, um, it allows you would like to buy a parcel, you know, um, agricultural parcel, and then build a wedding bar, can you do it? This is gonna allow you to do that?
You could, yeah, as long as it's.
You don't farm the rest?
Yeah, I think it needs, there's some language in there that, you know, you, you can't pave the whole three acres or ten acres, it has to have some rural character to it.
Right.
Oh, Sonia, hey, welcome, thank you, anything else you'd like to add?
Good evening, Council, I'm so sorry it was taking, um, my Zoom a little bit while to, a little bit while to load, to let me into the meeting, um, and I, I think I heard a lot of the background conversation, thank you Chad for reading off some of those restrictions, and I think um, a lot of the summary that's been given so far is correct, um, so in terms of basics, uh, for which buildings could be used to, to allow a rural event venue, uh, per Julia's question, this would only be in the AS, which is small lot agricultural zoning districts, and the rural event venue could be allowed as a conditional use in two situations, one would be an existing building. Um, and the second option would be a new building, um, so the idea from Ag and Rural and Plan Commission is that we're not just allowing a new commercial building to spring up for any commercial use, that's definitely not the intent of lands outside of the urban service area, but rather to keep that use connected in some way to the agricultural zoning district which it's in, so there are two ways that the ordinance would do that, and that would require um, continued farming on the parcel, or that the AS parcel itself is part of a larger farm of contiguous land holdings, so that larger farm would, would be tilled or in agricultural use, um, and then also the second tie that they have to agriculture is that the building itself has some sort of agricultural use, and that's defined in two ways specifically in the ordinance, um, one would be through agricultural entertainment, that could allow things like corn maze, pumpkin picking, cider festival type of thing, um, or ag education. Um, or the second use would be through providing ag retail, so that's pro- uh, would be sale of products that were grown on the farm, so something like canned produce um, on the farm, so that's the way that these committees have voted to keep this directly tied to agriculture, um, so that we're staying true to the intent of those ag and open space land uses. Hopefully that answers the question, if there's anything else you wanted to go over, let me know, and I can try to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, then we can go to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? Alright, that is approved, anything else, Randy?
Uh, nothing further from Hagen Rural.
Alright, going on to EMS, Shannon?
Um, so, um, we met Thursday, and, um, pretty much the only thing I have, um, to report is, um, October fifth, Chief Anderson will be coming to the Finance Committee to talk about the budget for the EMS. And that's it.
Alright, thank you, uh, Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Um, no update in terms of the committee, um, there is going to be a um, event sponsored by Bike Fitchburg on September eleventh. Um, it will be a bike rodeo, for those who don't know what a bike rodeo is, it's essentially an event that, uh, promotes bicycle safety particularly among, uh, children, um, and that will be held in the New Fountains Apartments parking lot from ten to one, uh, I believe, is that correct, Steve? Alright, got a nod from Steve, so, uh, I, I encourage you to attend, especially if you have little ones, and, um, they are um, looking for volunteers, so if you wanna go to the Bike Fitchburg website, or, uh, get in contact with, uh, Steve Arnold, um, if you're interested in helping out in some sort of way.
Alright, thank you, uh, Tree Advisory?
Yeah, so we met on August twelfth, and we actually took a look at some draft language for a tree protection ordinance, and discussed it in depth about what we kind of, although it was specific language, we were talking more broad strokes about what we wanted the, the ordinance to, uh, how we wanted it to, what we wanted it to reflect, and how, what the scope of it should be, um, and so we're gonna continue looking at that specific language. And, uh, Mayor Richardson, you can expect to hear from the Tree Advisor Committee in the near future, hopefully with, with a draft, uh, and some, some information about what, what is gonna be forthcoming. And we also wanna have more conversations with the city lawyer, and the plant, planning staff, and also the Plan Commission in the future, um, to make sure that we're getting this ordinance in ship, in tip-top shape before we bring it into the council, um, but that is still underway. And then we also discussed the budget for, um, forestry for the Comfort twenty twenty-two, and um, the different requests that were made, I just would like to point out a couple of things that, that I thought were interesting, um, the Emerald Ashbore problem has really gotten bad over the last ten years, and it's, it's a huge time suck for our forester, she spends a lot of time um, dealing with that issue, and there's also the intersecting issue of not having enough funding to actually treat all the trees that need to be treated, um, which is gonna eventually lead to, um, eventually will lead to those trees needing to be cut down, so, um, there's, there's a real, it's a real difficulty that that problem has, has, has introduced to the Forestry Department. Uh, another thing that I learned was that the, the forestry physician has only been three days a week from the start, and that position started in two thousand one. And when you think about how much our city has changed over the last twenty years, how many parks we've added, how many construction projects that require natural areas and, and, and forests, um, right, and tree situations, all of those things have been added to the plate of our forester who's only three days a week, and she still has the same number of hours a week. Um, so I think that in future budgets, you know, I hope for twenty twenty-two, but, you know, as we move forward with the council, I think we really need to look at how we can increase the hours for, uh, the forester, and also, um, maintain a forestry assistant over the summertime, because this, the forestry assistant this year has been a huge help in order to be able to take care of all the projects that are happening around the city. Um, and then also just nurseries, uh, for, I, I didn't know this before, but forest nurseries actually grow the young trees that we, uh, plant were really decimated by the two thousand eight recession, and a lot of them actually haven't come back, so trees in general have been more expensive, because there literally aren't the nurseries that are growing them, um, so that's also another intersecting issue where, where it's more difficult to get trees, and then sometimes trees are more expensive, so, um, all these things are playing into, um, the forestry budget, and uh, I hope the, uh, Mayor, you asked for bu- budget priorities, um, at that last committee, the whole meeting, I was, I didn't have a chance to discuss it with Tree Advisory in the past, but just wanna let you know that, that's what we discussed, and the committee was in, um, unanimous agreement that the, the proposal that, um, that's got end up put forward for forestry this year was, was a good step in the right direction. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, uh, Lamers Preservation?
Uh, we haven't met, so I've got nothing.
Alright, uh, Housing Advisory, Joe?
Um, same as, uh, Julia, there's, we're having a combined meeting, uh, with Seda next, uh, this coming Thursday, seven o'clock.
Alright, Healthy Neighborhoods, uh, I do know that, uh, that is getting referred out to become a permanent committee, so I believe that's going to diverse committees, and September. Okay, yeah, referring out on September twelfth, and. The fourteenth, yep, so that'll be referred out next meeting, actually. Alright, uh, Finance Committee, Randy?
Uh, yes, this evening, the Finance Committee, uh, reviewed and approved Bill's detailed review of all checks issued. Checks one, two, two, four, three, six, one, two, two, four, eight, seven, for the period of August first to the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one totaling three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents.
Alright, thank you, uh, Personnel Committee, anything, Julia?
Meeting September eighth.
Alright, uh, Public Safety?
I'd like to move approval of Resolution R one fifty-seven twenty-one, approval to implement inspection reports online, I R O L.
Is there a second? Sent by Julia, and did Public Safety approve this?
Public Safety did.
What is this?
I will let the chief, uh, explain.
Alright.
Thank you, everyone, this is an agreement that we have, uh, to, uh, access online reports for fire protection and fire alarm systems, so as a, uh, as a, uh, it could be an industry, it could be a commercial complex, could be multifamily residential, anywhere where these systems are, the Anywhere where these systems are, the companies that inspect and repair those systems report on the system. We just then have access to it to be able to include that during our inspection. So there's no cost to us, but there is value to save on, on the paper trail.
Excellent. Questions at all? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else on Public Safety, Dave?
No.
All right, on to Mayor's Report.
Could I, could I back up on?
Yeah.
There is an event coming, you know, a wonderful event, bicycle event for, with disabled veterans that's happening the 20, Thursday, Friday this week, I believe, sound right? It's a wonderful event. We should be very proud to have it being held in our, in our city. So I just wanted to mention, mention that.
All right, thank you. All right, going on to Mayor's Report. The main thing, we were able to fulfill some committee appointments tonight, which is great. I still have three openings. CETA has an opening, RCC has an opening, and Zoning Board of Appeals has an opening. I know RCC, there's a couple of people who I, like, one number was dead for someone who had applied. And I think the other, I think there's someone else I called who is moving or isn't available right now. So we have some applicants for RCC who can't, couldn't do it. But we, so we still have those three openings, if you know people who might be interested in those. And as mentioned earlier, kind of my focus in this last week is to make sure I can also finalize people for the redistricting committee, and I can send that out. Once I have those people confirmed, they can make those essentially three weeks that we have. And I also just need to confirm with Chad about possibly having to do a special council meeting, really just to approve those redistricting maps. And so we'll get that information out to you as soon as we can, so that you can have that reserved on your calendar as well. It hopefully isn't too long of a meeting, but that would be the only thing on there that we would take action on. All right, Alder Reports, and I believe I would start with District 4, Randy.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, District 1, Dave?
Uh, our LA Dunn's, LA Drive Dunn's Marsh neighborhood, our meeting last week got canceled due to a bad Zoom, Zoom code. So we haven't got that rescheduled, unfortunately. I want to point out, school will probably be starting before our next council meeting. I think all of you in your districts motorists kind of forget and get surprised when they come down the street in the flashing lights. So a warning, not a warning, but ask everyone to watch out for children when they're back out on the street. Jamestown Neighborhood Association on September 1st is having our, kind of our annual meeting, election of officers. So if anyone's interested, you can go find the, the date and the details on the Zoom meeting on Nextdoor. Saturday, last Saturday, there was a listening session that was organized by some people from Madison and a young woman that lives over in the Dunn's Marsh. I won't mention her name, but she was robbed last October, and she is still visibly shaken when she talked. She gave a testimony at that, that meeting. And it was mostly a listening session, didn't really get to, to solutions, but a lot of good comments on that. We also had in our district on Sunday, we had a free baseball clinic for youths on Sunday night in the Pocket Park. Following that up, we had a movie, we showed The Sandlot after that evening. It was a nice, nice event in our, in our, in our district. So that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Joe.
I have a couple of things. So there are two pretty recently appointed school board members to the Verona School District that live in Fitchburg. Nicole Vafdari and Jen Murphy. And they are having a listening session on September 14th at 6:00 PM. And I, I believe it's going to be virtual. So if you can attend, I definitely encourage you to do so. There will be a, an event, if I could share my screen really quickly. It's called Legacy of Love. It's being held by Carmella Harris, who is a Fitchburg resident in District 1. It'll be held in Allied Park behind Revival Ridge, which is in Madison, but right across the border, at 1:00 PM on this Friday, the 28th. There is going to be a Restorative Justice Summit. This is actually a statewide event, a virtual event, held by UW Extension. It's going to be September 10th, October 8th, and November 12th from 9:30 to 12:00 PM. It's going to be an event that brings together youth, as well as youth-serving organizations across the state to present on the, the concept of restorative justice, which is sort of how do we reform the way that we think about, you know, punishment and repairing harm? The first event was held last year, and it was pretty successful. It had about 500 attendees. So I definitely encourage you all to attend. It's free. And if you look up Wisconsin Restorative Justice Summit on Google, you should be able to find it. And then I believe that's all I have for District 1 Reports.
All right, Julia.
Um, so in District 2, we are having a meeting this coming August 26th with the, with the Cheryl Drive Stormwater Study. It's a meeting with the, I think it's the final study and some solution. So that event is going to be in person from 6 to 7 here at the City Hall or virtual. If you need, the Zoom link is in the letter that most of the neighbors received. Some of the neighbors didn't receive the letter. We tried to email some of the information to some of them. But if you need a link to the Zoom, send me an email, and I can connect with the person here in City Hall that can send you the Zoom link. So this is a very important meeting, and I hope we can start working on the solutions for this flooding issue that we have in the, in this type of the neighborhood. The other thing I want to mention is that Andrew, our traffic engineer, put together a transportation survey, survey. I helped him with the translation in Spanish, so he's in both languages. So we, the, the survey is published in several platforms that the city has. Some of the other are already sharing that. So this is an opportunity for the resident that to send us the input about, or concern about safety. I know that we have a couple in our district, District 2, especially in Richardson Street, speeding. Another issue where people know stopping and stop sign, this is something new. So, so this is, this is important that we receive the feedback. I talked to Andrew this afternoon, and so far we have almost 200 survey coming. So it's good. And the other thing that I didn't mention in, in parks is that I am not going to mention, but is we already have a donor for the pickleball court for some of the fencing. So this is great. I think is, there is a lot of, I, I walk there to the pickleball court. There is a lot of amenity that they need, but I think the city is trying to get some donation, working with some of the pickleball association. They are part in the partnership. You know, there are a lot of amenities that we need to, to include. So, but so far yesterday, someone from District 2 is planning to donate for the fence between the court, you know? So that's just great. I hope this one is the first one too many to come. So we need some benches, we need water fountain there, would be great. Sitting area, so everyone is listening, you know, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Gabriella.
Shockingly today, I have no reports.
All right, neither does Jay Allen. Shannon?
No report.
All right, then we can move on to new business directory referrals. Randy, do you want to handle this first one here? I heard you maybe want to do something with this?
Yes, so I'm clear. I do have an amendment to offer. So I guess I'd like to offer an amendment to this resolution.
Well, first, there needs to be a motion to amend. So I think that, I believe if I was told right earlier, you can move to postpone and then amend it from there.
All right. I move to postpone Resolution R-158-21 and the resolution to reject bid for site work, McKee Farms Park Inclusive Playground.
Second.
All right, signed by Dave. And do you want to speak to why we're postponing and what you're doing with this amendment you're about to propose?
Uh, I can offer the amendment.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, all right. It's been written out, and I'll just pass it down to you once I'm, once I'm finished, so. Now be it resolved by the Fitchburg Common Council that it rejects bid provided by Speedway Sand and Gravel for the, this inclusive playground, site work, and orders the Public Works and Parks Department to do site preparation and grading work under the supervision of the Board of Public Works, and to seek new bids for work not completed internally by the city.
All right, so there's a motion to amend there. All right, is there a second to the amendment? Signed by Julia.
Okay.
Do you want to speak to what, why we're doing that?
I would prefer.
Chad, maybe?
Chad.
All right.
He knows this inside and out.
Well, inside and out might be a bit complimentary, but I will do my best here, Randy. So basically, the reason for the amendment and the postponement is as follows. City ordinances require that the council direct staff to complete specific work in the event of a bid rejection. That was pointed out by the city attorney during their review of this resolution. And therefore, that language was added by Alder Udell here through amendment. And then in the interest of ensuring that the public is adequately noticed about what, what is taking place, and also to provide additional direction to staff, we thought it'd be best to make that amendment and then also then re-refer this amendment if it passes, or this resolution as amended if it passes, back to Finance, Parks, and the Board of Public Works. All three of those committees or commissions meet prior to the September 14th council meeting. So hopefully that provides you with the insight and background information. And then obviously Scott is here if you have any questions in regards to the project itself and the work that the Parks and Public Works Department may engage in.
So it looks like additionally, I don't know, maybe it was referred to Parks, but it's not listed on the sheet, but it would be referred to Parks as well from here. Okay.
Yes.
Julia.
Um, so I want to know why we are referring back and we cannot amend it tonight, and council has the power to move forward with this? Because I watch, you know, I, I am in parks, I watch public work. So it was mentioned in those committee when it was postponed, it was postponed, or we had to reject the bid, that Public Works was planning to, to do the work. So it was already mentioned. So my question is, because one of my concerns is that we are delaying the project a couple of, maybe two or three weeks. Fall is coming. You know, and then by November, our ground is, is start getting frozen. So my question is, why do we need to move? If we are introducing an amendment, why we don't, cannot introduce an amendment on the floor tonight? Why do we need to refer back to all of these commission? What is the purpose?
Valerie, I'll offer an answer here, but if you want to add anything to it, I'll certainly defer. But basically, the thought process was is that allows the commissions and committees an opportunity to review it out of courtesy, if nothing else. And if they had any questions, comments, or concerns, it would obviously provide an additional avenue for that conversation, since the committees and commissions are made up, obviously primarily of Alders, but there are also some committees or commissions that have other members as well.
I'll let Valerie also chime in.
Yeah, I don't know that the recommendation of committees is what's vital here. I think the thought here is that what was missing from the resolution previously is language directing staff to do some of this work internally. And so certainly the council could act tonight to reject the site bid due to the costs. The council could amend the resolution and order staff to do it. But the concern we had was that what was noticed on the agenda was a resolution to reject the site work. I didn't see it in the referral materials, the discussion about directing staff to do the work. And so I think the safer course of action, if there isn't a time crunch in terms of getting the work done, would be to amend it and then re-notice it at the next meeting and take action then. I think the thought was that if the council is inclined to wait two weeks to act on the resolution as amended, assuming of course that you all vote to amend it, I don't want to sound presumptuous, but if, if that does in fact take place, then it would allow those other boards to, an opportunity to review those in those two weeks. It would not delay the action date of the council.
So if I'm understanding you right, because it says it's just rejecting the site bids, the bids, because we're actually directing staff to do it, I make sure that the public, the other people, understand that, you know, staff is doing most of that work, and there might be things that we do need to refer out at a later date.
That's, that's correct. I think the concern here is just making sure that we're in full compliance with open meetings. Now that said, I don't know that this is kind of a, a terminal issue because I think the fact that the item on the agenda did address rejection of the site work, and this is somewhat related, and certainly council has the ability to amend some motions. But again, as I mentioned, the safer course of action in the absence of a time crunch would be to re-notice it with, with the language updated in the resolution. That would say that the resolution is to reject the site work and to direct staff to do some of the work internally.
All right, Gabriella, and then Julia maybe has another question. Go ahead, Gabriella.
Yeah, Scott is on the line. I do have a question for him because, you know, normally our, our meetings are two weeks away, but given the calendar, this is actually a three-week delay because of how the, the meetings shake out. Scott, what, what does a three-week delay do in terms of executing this project?
Well, I, I, I think it certainly delays it. It is, it is in a bit of a, a time crunch, Gabriella. But I'm thinking, as I mentioned, at Finance, there's really three steps to the project. The council completed the first step in ordering the equipment and getting it installed. This is kind of the second step to get the site ready for the equipment, which I think is, is critical. That needs to be done, certainly needs to be done prior to the delivery of the equipment. The third piece is the port-in-place surfacing, and that, that may end up being something that, due to weather, might not be able to be completed this fall because there are some, some minimum temperature requirements. You know, I think certainly it's going to delay, Gabriella, but to Valerie's point, and, and, you know, making sure everybody is aware of what's going on. And I, and certainly the Parks Department is, is busy with a, a lot of other things at this point. You know, a, a two-week delay may, you know, I, I don't know if it's going to help either way, to be honest with you, just because we, you know, I don't know if we'd have the time at this point to, to get that work undertaken.
Can I follow up with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so I guess, I guess that's my follow-up is, is do you think that if this was approved tonight, would you even have time in the next few weeks to get started on it? Or like, can you anticipate that this will likely be passed in three weeks and ready to go at that point, or?
You know, and, and, well, that's a good point, Gabriella. We really officially cannot do anything until the resolution is passed. You know, we can't, you know, I can't go out and publicly bid these projects, you know, without, without it being officially rejected, if you know what I mean. So it, and, and, you know, the projects will be bid. It, it's typically, you know, one to two weeks to get prices and, and all of those kinds of things. So, you know, we can't officially, you know, put anything out to bid prior to the, to the bid being rejected.
Julia, did you have another question?
Yeah, so, so this is what I, I am still confused because in the. so this is what I, I am still confused because in the past, we have amended so many resolutions and we, that affect how commission voted, and we never send it back to them, which we changed language. So, I understand that, um, you know, that, I understand the ordinance, the truth there to reject the bid and all of that, but I don't, I don't understand why we can, this council has, this body has the power to, to, to add this amendment tonight and move forward. So, so we cannot delay this, this project. Uh, so, so far I haven't heard any logic question, answer to, to the, you know, because we have done all the time, we amend resolutions, so. So this is, this is what I am confused. And, and I want to know why we can know, you know, uh, amend tonight, this body, and move forward. And, uh, you know, I'm, I think as I mentioned, uh, it was mentioned in the commissions when the bid was rejected that, uh, a staff, a city staff was planning to do the work, this part of the work, so. So they already, some of the commissioners heard about this, so it's not going to be new to them.
Valerie, I do have one question for you. I believe I heard Chad told me earlier that if we were to take action, do we need two-thirds to reject that? And is that two-thirds of eight? So essentially six of eight, which means all six of us here have to approve it?
Because the language says two-thirds of the members as opposed to two-thirds of the members elect, I think that just two-thirds of the members voting would be sufficient.
What did she say?
And certainly I think if the council wants to proceed tonight, you can. As I mentioned, I think the risk, the concern here is that somebody would, um, file an open meetings violation claiming that the public didn't have sufficient notice. That said, I think it would, it's a pretty gray area because as I mentioned, the item is noticed. Uh, what's not noticed is that this amendment, that some of the work will be done internally. I don't think it's entirely left field for the council to do it. But that said, um, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that it is on my radar and it is a concern, albeit a small one.
Okay, so tonight if four of six would vote, if we decided to vote tonight, we would only need four out of six votes tonight, because there's six people here and two-thirds is four. Okay. All right, uh, Julia.
So how can I, can I put an amendment to? So to consider the amendment and be passed by this?
So first we have to vote on the amendment because you can't amend an amendment. So first we'll vote on the amendment. And then essentially you would vote to reject postponing, and then someone would want to then make a motion to approve as amended, because you don't want to approve postponement, all right, because then it's gone. So you essentially have to reject postponement, or it can be also just removed from, the motion can be just rescinded as well.
But do we need to vote to reject the bid first?
Well, no, we vote to, first we vote on the amendment, and then we have to vote on the postponement because that's the motion on the table right now is to postpone it. That's the main motion.
Oh, to postpone, okay.
All right, clear as mud, I'm sure. Uh, other questions? Gabriella? And then Valerie.
I, I did have a chance to watch the public works meeting, but I just want to clarify with, from Dave's perspective. The, the public works discussion did include the understanding that the staff would do this work after the bids were rejected. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, Gabriella.
Okay, so that, that's like understood by the Board of Public Works with the approval. I, I guess the reason I ask is because I think that it seems to me that, it didn't occur to me at finance, and I wish it did, because I wish we could have acted at finance specifically, but it does seem like it would be, in my opinion, appropriate to act tonight just so that, because it is a three-week delay. And that can be a long time, especially when we're talking about getting into September and the cold temperatures and, um, there does seem to be a bit of urgency, so it's something to consider.
Valerie, I saw you had your hand up.
I did, and I just wanted to clarify procedurally, the, the, the two-thirds vote is really only required for purposes of actually directing staff to do the work as opposed to, um, the motion to postpone, uh, or the motion to amend. Uh, and I would also like to carefully, uh, walk back that comment about two-thirds of members and looking at some of our ordinances, we have some inconsistent language, which I'm making a note to myself that we may want to clean up at some point. But I think because there's some ambiguity, it would be a safer route to interpret that to mean two-thirds of the members, and so that we would do need six votes. Again, the concern here is that if somebody wants to come back and challenge this action, uh, we don't, and again, I don't know that somebody would want to, but, uh, we want to dot our Ts and cross our, dot our Is, don't dot the Ts.
Okay, so we would need all six people here to approve the amendment.
I think it's the safer route to go. I'm looking at our ordinances and we have some conflicting language in terms of how we word it. Uh, we have some places where we say two-thirds of the entire council, but then there's two-thirds of members and two-thirds of, uh, members present. So because in one ordinance, I found reference to members present, and that's not in this ordinance, I think the safer interpretation, if we don't want to allow for a challenge, would be to have a, a six vote, uh, it's a six yes vote as opposed to two-thirds of the present members.
All right, and it's a little confusing because it's just the amendment that has to have that, the actual postponer approval doesn't need that.
The, right, so the amendment, the, the motion to amend is just standard Roberts rules, the motion to postpone is standard Roberts rules. When the vote on the resolution itself happens, that's when that majority is.
Okay, so the amendment doesn't, it's if, if we voted to approve it, then it would.
Precisely. It is the ultimate vote on the amendment that orders staff to do the work. And again, it's not even the portion of it that rejects the bid that can be done in the normal due pro, due, uh, process of the council taking action, but this, this particular directing staff to do the work, that's what requires the two-thirds vote.
Okay, all right.
Okay, can, can, I didn't understand what she said, the last part, because she, she wasn't speaking too fast, so. So we need two-thirds of the present member?
Nope, we, she, she actually just clarified, so it would be two-thirds of the council, so six out of eight votes, so all six of us tonight would have to say yes to, uh, to essentially.
Where is in the ordinance? Because I was looking the ordinance this afternoon and I couldn't find the paragraph that, you know, do you have, you know, it's.
I think part of the problem is that it's not always clear in there. If it's six of present, or two-thirds of present and two-thirds of total, so that's something to clean up in the ordinances, but it's in a few different spots.
Yeah, because it's not clear in the ordinance either, so.
All right, so back to, so we have an amendment proposed. More questions, comments on that piece? So the amendment is essentially directing staff to do the work and then reading out anything they can't do. So, any other questions on that? Okay. Nissi, none? All in favor of amending the resolution, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so now the, the main motion right now is to postpone. And so if you would rather approve tonight, then essentially you would reject, well, you, you can, you, well, I, we can reject it and then make a motion to approve, or you can withdraw the motion if you want. I mean, there's a few ways of doing it. It's, 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 the, it's kind of confusing, but yeah.
I am confused because I, what I want, the way I want to vote is I want to vote with the resolution tonight.
Right.
That's it. So instead of go on sending everything back to, to commission and, and delay for three more weeks, the project. So I want to know.
So first you would vote no on postponing, and then someone would have to do a new motion to essentially approve their rejection.
Okay.
And then you'd vote yes on that.
Okay.
Yeah, Gabriella.
I'd be interested to hear what the other Alders are interested in because I, I mean, I certainly don't want this to fail tonight, because we reject, I mean, like, is, is Alder Udell interested in, in rescinding the postponement, or are the other, where the other Alders are standing? I'd be interested in hearing thoughts.
Yeah, essentially if anyone would says, no, I'm not going to approve the, it tonight, then we shouldn't vote on it tonight. We should postpone it.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd love to hear people's thoughts before we, before we try this out.
Any other, anyone else? Randy, do you want to speak?
No, I'm not sure if I, if the question was answered for her or not. I don't know if she was asking me or.
I think anyone else that we haven't heard from yet, I mean, is anyone, would anyone say, no, I don't want to essentially approve the rejection of the bids tonight?
No.
Which, yeah, Shannon, did you want to speak at all?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, you know, I would vote for it. You know, I wouldn't vote a, I wouldn't vote it down, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so, yeah, she, she's okay with rejecting the bids. That's what I understood there. It's weird because you're saying yes to no.
It, what we're talking is about, you know,
No, that's.
It's sending the stuff back to all the commission, you know, with the new language, that's it.
Yep, any other comments at all? All right, so I don't see anyone else speaking, so, uh, so right now the vote is if you want to postpone and refer back to committee. So, all in favor of postponing and not making, uh, action tonight, say aye.
Aye.
And on the, and all against, say nay.
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 Uh, Tracy, can you, I think it's, I think it's four or two, but let's just do a roll call because it's messy enough.
Alder Allen is absent. Alder Roda Frada?
Nay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Nay.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strasman?
You went on mute and then you.
No.
No, okay.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
And Alder Wheeler is absent, so we have four to two, four nay, two aye.
All right, so we are not postponing as of now. Julia, would you like to make a resolution?
Yeah, I, so I move, uh, so the resolution should include that this body should approve.
As amended, yeah.
Yeah, as amended with the language that Randy mentioned.
So, make it clear, you're moving to approve Resolution R one fifty-eight twenty-one as amended?
As amended.
Okay, is there a second? Saying about Dave, all right. Further discussion at all? No? All right. Then seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approving the resolution to reject this bid, uh, for the site work as amended, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is two-thirds. That's six out of eight. We're good. All right. Uh, unless anyone abstained, I should ask, did anyone abstain? All right, good. All right, sold. Let's move on. All right, uh, public, is this, Dave has spoken, so if you want to do this one?
I move approval, move approval of Resolution R one fifty-five twenty-one, approval for indemnification agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated.
Second.
All right, I think it's actually one sixty-five. Uh, signed by Randy. And it, do you also have an amendment that you'd like to do?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to change the resolution wording to say approval of agreement and remove indemnification. Is that what you prefer, chief?
Yeah, any mention of the word indemnification in the resolution should be struck, struck, um, and just make it an agreement, and that's based on the recommendation of the city attorney.
All right, so you're making a motion to amend, right?
I'm ma, I'm making a motion to amend the resolution wording to say approval of agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
Saying that I heard Julia first, I guess. All right, uh, Dave, do you want to speak to any of that?
I'll let, I'll let the chief speak on that.
So, uh, this agreement is, allows us to use the property on East Cheryl and Salsine where QuickTrip is going to be putting their new store. Um, it allows us to use it without any risk of being held harmless for anything that happens in the building. And then QuickTrip is held harmless to anything that happens to a firefighter or a police officer because we'll offer this up to other city employees for training, but, uh, the, the idea is that they will not be held harmless if we get injured in their building.
All right, Dave, do you want anything else?
Nope, that's pretty clear.
Questions at all?
Oh, sorry.
What kind of training?
Are you planning to do?
So that's a really good question. The, the training that we will do, actually this building itself has a really, um, confusing layout. So to do search and rescue in this building, to do anything that involves typical fire ground operations can be done to include, uh, stretching hose lines, uh, doing things with, uh, with ladders, other tools that we would typically use. And then the police department can use it for different functions that they use to include training their dogs.
All right, anything else? All right, first we have to vote on the amendment, so that's changing the language to remove indemnify. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so now it's amended, and I don't see anything else further. So all in favor of approving the amended resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that is also approved. Uh, all right, anyone want to make a motion on this next one? For me? Julia? All right, perfect.
I move approval of Resolution R dash one six seven dash twenty-one, allowing members of the council and other bodies to appear telephonically or via the internet until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
Saying that I heard Randy first. Uh, do you want me to speak to this? All right, so we've actually had this for a while now. It was scheduled to expire at the end of August. Obviously COVID isn't going away, and so we're extending it again. And if, at the end of the year, we're still in this situation, which frankly, we probably will be, we can extend it again at that point in time. Uh, but wanted to at least extend it through the end of the year for now. Uh, hopefully COVID gets better, but, um, it, I think it's important to continue having this as an option for people, especially with the Delta variant uh, rising in a lot of areas throughout the country, including Dane County, so. Any questions or comments?
I, idea.
Great idea, all right. Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is approved. All right, next up, we have a council hearing on the building inspectors determination of chronic nuisance at twenty-three thirty-seven Apache Drive. Uh, Valerie, do you want to kind of kick this off? I know there has to be a sworn in piece and you're going to kind of tell us what's going on in the process, so go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a, a little bit unusual, I think, for most members of this body. Um, generally speaking, um, the kind of things that come before the common council are legislative acts, so largely resolutions and ordinances that essentially, uh, you serve in a lawmaking capacity. That's, that's what ordinances and, to an extent, resolutions of the common council are. But in this case, this, this, this thing that is before you today is a, what is called the quasi judicial proceeding. And what that means is that for the rest of this hearing, I'm going to ask uh, all of you to take off your lawmaking hats off and put on your judge and jury hats. Uh, what you'll be doing here today is listening to, um, evidence and then making, find, doing what's called fact finding. So in other words, finding what you believe is true and what the facts are in this case, and then you'll be applying those facts to the law and to our ordinances. So what you will not be doing is deciding policy, uh, or, uh, stating kind of public sentiment or public opinion, or even your personal opinion in any way. It is really vital that you remain, again, as I said, put on your judge hats. Uh, you are judges for, uh, the next half an hour or an hour, however long this takes. Uh, and so you, you really want to remain fair and impartial, and it is very important that you, uh, listen to all of the evidence that comes in, um, and you make your decision that is fair and that is based on the evidence that you hear during this hearing and not uh, any other sentiments that you might have or anything else that you might have heard outside of this proceeding today. So, um, with that, I guess I'll just kind of let you know what the, the anticipated plan is, and, and before I do that, I will let you know that I'm also here and I'm available. I am not prosecuting this case. I will not be presenting these facts to you. Uh, instead, I'll be available to advise you in your, uh, quasi judicial capacity. And so, uh, I will not be running the show other than to answer kind of process questions and help guide you in this process. Uh, but what will happen next is that, uh, we will, uh, ask the clerk to swear in the witnesses. Uh, it's my understanding that building inspection, Uh, it's my understanding that building inspection, uh, is going to present, uh, their case first, so, uh, Chan Cook, our building inspector, will be sworn in. Uh, he'll have an opportunity to present his case. The homeowner, if she chooses to appear, can ask him questions if she wants. Uh, certainly the council could ask questions if, uh, if members have, uh, questions that relate to what's been presented. Um, and then, uh, the homeowner would have an opportunity to present her case and hers, the defense, so to speak. Um, likewise, you know, if there are any questions, we can ask, uh, you can ask the owner to provide answers to those, uh, and then uh, at the conclusion of that, you will have an opportunity to go into closed session. Uh, you will deliberate, uh, essentially discuss amongst yourselves uh, what you believe to be, uh, the appropriate fa- facts that you want to find, as well as apply them to the law and then make a determination. Ultimately, the question is going to be before you whether you want to reverse the finding of the building inspector that this property, uh, at twenty three thirty seven Apache Drive presents a chronic nuisance, or whether you want to affirm that finding. And again, you're going to either reverse that finding, or you will affirm it based on the evidence that's presented before you. So, uh, I, there are two, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, question?
I've got a couple things, actually, real quick for you. First, if members of the public want to speak at all on this, should I have them go first? At what point could they do that, a comment if they wanted to?
Well, um, I guess I would defer to, uh, the chair in terms of the order, I don't think that, um, it really, I, I think it might make sense to have them go first, especially if they've been waiting this whole time, and if they want uh, to, to say their piece and, and then be done and be done with the, uh, their appearance tonight, given the.
Do we need to do any, oh, go ahead, and then the other question I had is, do we need to do a kind of a motion before we start the proceedings? I know that Tracy's gonna swear John in, but other than that, do we need to do a motion or anything at this point, or after we come out of council, the closed session?
There's no need for a motion at this time.
Okay. Uh, Gabrielle, I think you had a question?
Are you gonna define for us the public nuisance, you know, in, in a, in a legal sense, for us to help determine? That, or is that gonna come up in the, in the actual proceedings?
Absolutely, will come up in the proceeding, it is also in the packet, um, and I'm happy to discuss it with you either now, if you'd like, or during your deliberation, uh, but in your packet, you should have a copy of the ordinances uh, that deal with the chronic nuisance, I believe it's at the very end.
Alright, other questions? Okay, and I think first, I know the Martins are online, I'm not sure if you want to speak or not, but if you would like to, now would be the time. Uh, would you have any interest in either one of you speaking to this before we get started? You're on, I don't know if you're trying to speak or not, but you're on mute. And I believe that's the only other person I have online. Oh, there you go.
Hello.
Hello. Would you like to speak before we get started?
Yes, please, okay.
Alright.
Alright, uh, regarding, first of all, I'd start regarding May's comments. It is wonderful, she wants to help her mom, so she doesn't lose her house, which we don't want to see either. However, saying she wants to help her mom and being able to get her mom to let the items go can be two different things. Also, how long would it take to get the outside cleaned up? I wish may, what, we wish May well, okay, now. Good evening, my name is William Martin, I'm the next door neighbor of Chris Appleby. This is the second year she has all the rubbish and debris sitting in her front, side and backyards, and it is an eyesore for the entire neighborhood. Jack Pearson has issued multiple tickets to Norville. She ignores them and keeps adding to her pile of rubbish and debris, but she leaves uncovered and open to the elements. Who knows if there are any critters living in this mess? There's a lot of garbage sitting around too, and this gives off an offensive odor. My wife and I are an older couple and are worried about our property value. If we sell our home in the future, could we even find a buyer? What about all the houses around us? What is the effect on their property values? The situation adds needless stress to our lives. I don't believe Chris will ever clean up her yard by herself. She's had four dumpsters, each dumpster sat there for six weeks, and she still has more to remove from her yard. I believe the only way this situation will be resolved is she's declared a chronic nuisance and the city cleans up her yard. I ask for your vote to ever declare a chronic nuisance, so we can get her yard cleaned up and this ordeal finished and give us some peace of mind. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I believe that's all, everyone from the public that's here to speak, so we can go ahead and go into the proceedings. I believe the first step is for Tracy to swear John in. Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, John, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony shall given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, and I believe it is your turn, John.
Alright, I guess what we'll do is, is, I was gonna give you the, um, the pictures first, Scott, let's see these first. This is what we've been dealing with since July of last year. These are just some of the, uh, just a few of the pictures that we've taken over the, over the last year plus. So that's her house, and that's tarps that she's got over the, over, over her valuable garbage, I think she gets from, uh, garage sales, I think that's what they do when they buy out garage sales, that's what this is. So this is the first date. And you see the tarps get bigger and bigger. And you do understand that the backyard's full too, we'll have a picture of the backyard, the backyard's full of debris too, or treasure, she calls it, so. So this, we're, we're actually, we started in July, so we're, you know, two full months into this. Um, but now that's wet and rained, all that stuff is, you know, partially covered, the rain's on it. So that's from, I want to say that that probably is the Martins, that's the backyard. That's, that's what some of those people in the backyard have to look at. So I think that's the last one, right, isn't it, Scott? So, that's just kind of, as I always say, I teach my guys from day one, pictures, 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 cause they say a thousand words. I can tell you how horrible it is, but you can see the physical evidence that none of this has been cleaned up in, you know, fourteen months. Um, you asked, uh, Gabrielle, you asked, um, what the definition of a chronic nuisance is. Um, it's basically any property which my department declares, uh, uh, gets complaints in its nuisance activity uh, three or more separate occasions within a thirty day period. Um, esteemed received and required more than general acceptable levels of city services and places an undue burden upon the taxpayers of, of the city. For purposes of the section, the term nuisance activity means any offense, uh, offenses under the, uh, under any offense defined in the code is nuisance to the statutory or their statutory counterparts. Or any offense under state law to which a penalty, uh, forfeiture, fine or imprisonment is provided. An offense, uh, shall not be considered nuisance ac- activity, activity if it is committed by a person having no association with the presence, premises, by acquaintance with the relationship. Kind of goes on a little bit more, but basically, if we show up there um, three times within a month, we can declare the nuisance. You know, we've been there probably two hundred times in fourteen months, so, or, or more. Um, and that is, that's the, uh, Pittsburgh Municipal Code, uh, seventy four point five three. And in the, the, the long tenure that I've been here, this is only really the second time that we've used this uh, property maintenance, one was a, uh, apartment complex that we, uh, uh, deemed a nuisance back, oh gosh, probably ten years now, so. Uh, we use this light handed, not heavy handling, we don't use this a lot, we could probably use it more. Um, as you're well aware, the trailer park, we didn't use that on there, but we're getting cooperation from the owner as of, uh, as we speak. Um, so I'll get, I'll kind of chronicleize this, please, you guys, jump in with any questions that you have at the time, um, we'll answer them right away. So we started getting complaints on July twelfth of twenty twenty, um, they came through the mayors and other departments. Um, in over fourteen months, we've had over two hundred emails, um, probably over two hundred visits there. I do feel for her daughter, um, we did have a plan from, um, Mrs. Appleby. It, it went absolutely nowhere's. Um, and as a Martin said, there has been four dumpsters there, none of them have left full, and I just got a report today from Jack, he was over there, the one that they had in the driveway is gone now, as of today. Um, so that was our, our first contact with her on July twelfth of twenty twenty, uh, the fourteenth, uh, July fourteenth, we stopped by, took photos, and, uh, Jack also spoke, spoke to Christine in her roommate care line onsite about the ordinance violations and gave them a week to get it cleaned up or store the stuff out in public view. Um, at that time, they were kind of giving us the, the runaround that they were having a garage sale. And, you know, we perpetually can't have garage sales, I think it might be in the zoning order, three days max, um, but that's how we were kind of handling it. Um, reinspection photos were taken on, on the following dates, July twenty seventh, August tenth, prior to writing three citations for noncompliance on August tenth. Um, these citations were placed near door and photographed verification, verification of delivery. On, uh, August seventeenth and August twentieth, including the backyard for the neighbors with consent, so that's where we got those extra photos. On August twenty sixth, we sent a, a public nuisance letter to her via registered mail, which eventually was returned to us on August eighth as unclaimed after attempts by the US Postal Service were ignored. On September eleventh, uh, we had the same letter personally served to her by a member of the Pittsburgh Police Department. Uh, Pittsburgh Fire was called out to this location on September twenty fifth for a fire in a fire pitch, which turns out, which turned out to be a non-event, but this call, uh, but this call eventually got the senior center involved. At that point, we felt, um, through the, the senior center that they could help alleviate this problem. Um, so we stopped our enforcement actions at this time, um, to allow the senior center uh, and some other outside agen- agencies to explore the different avenues to gain compliance. We did, we did continue to monitor, monitor, um, the situation on a regular basis with photographs. The seniors and others had provided funding or partial funding for four different dumpsters. However, only one of those were fold, or were filled and removed. The other ones sat there for a month or so, and then were pulled out with small amounts of items placed in it. And, so this at all winner, um, we kind of, we're letting the seniors kind of handle this, tap, dance around with this. On January fourteenth, twenty twenty one, the homeowner was sent the second notification of public nuisance prior to the common council, prior to a common council meeting, which is what we're doing right now. On January twentieth, twenty twenty one, the homeowner responded with a plan of action that we accepted, due to weather conditions, we allowed for compliance of their action plan to be completed by April eleventh, um, with weather permitting. Uh, I think the action plan is actually on a handwritten note, and it should be in your packets. Um, I, at the time, you know, it's a lose-lose situation here, so at that time, I thought that she was, she kind of saw the light and knew that we were gonna come after her, and she'd take care of the problem. Well, we started getting several complaints, and unfortunately, um, with our heavy construction season, we really didn't get back to this until June. On June twenty eighth, the home, homeowner called and left a message with our department stating that she would have everything cleaned up by July fifth. As a family member was coming into town and would be able to assist her. Upon follow-up the following week, nothing had changed, and a dumpster was pulled out shortly after with very little in it. Two more citations were issued this past week, uh, the past July, and the homeowner has made, been made aware of the council meeting that has taken place. Um, and in your package, you have the, uh, uh, letters that we have sent her. Um, I, I don't know what more else we can do, we put this public nuisance, um, abatement order in because we had a major apartment complex in the north side that we could not get under control. So this is kind of what we do, this is the next order. Um, we can't, the way the law says, we can't go in there and swing in and start cleaning this property up ourselves. We can't send city crews in, I can't hire a crew or anybody. This is just one more step to allow us to go to, um, and I might be speaking out of turn, but, uh, some type of court, either circuit court at Dane County, Valerie could nod her head maybe for me? Um, that we, uh, uh, need to get that to go actually in there, take bids out and physically remove everything. I feel at this time, that's the only avenue we have. We, um, unfortunately, in, in hearing the daughter's, uh, response tonight, um, we're not even dealing with the interior. Um, I, I know, uh, chief would say that it's a huge, a huge fire hazard, yes, it is. If that was a rented apartment, we could go in there and get it cleaned up, but as far as personal property, um, if it stays inside the dwelling, we can't do much with it, but outside the dwelling, I want every can, tarp and everything picked up. Um, this is a long process, um, if we can get this done tonight, maybe, I cross my fingers, and I'm saying maybe, because everybody's busy, we can get it before the snow flies, because that's exactly what we owe that entire neighborhood. Um, please let me have any questions, but just say, I don't do this, I do this not lightly, I don't like doing this. Um, I really don't like being in front of the council, I think in thirty years, this is probably only the tenth time I've been in front of the council, so, good, bad or ugly, but, uh, um, any questions, please let me know. Um, just say, we do this with a heavy heart, but we have, it has to be done, this has, has to happen tonight.
Chad, did you have a comment?
Yeah, John, for the council, could you, uh, talk about the ordinance that's been, uh, the habitual problem, specifically, uh, seventy four dash ninety, which you have referenced here in the packet on page six oh three, uh, with the, um, with the notice, or the expect, inspection report and noncompliance notice? Could you just, for the council, talk about what that ordinance requires, and then could you also identify if there were, uh, any situations over a thirty day period uh, in which three or more citations or calls or complaints were received specifically?
Um, so habitual complaint is, is, there's probably not a week that goes by that, that we haven't had a complaint there at the property. It comes through the mayors, it comes through the city administrators, um, office, Chad, you're just starting to get the, the brunt of them being new, but, uh, so that's just a habitual complaint, so if we get three complaints in a month, along with the police department or anybody, um, you know, that, that's when the chronic nuisance and all this stuff kicks in, is that what you're kind of asking for, Chad?
Yeah, and, but more specifically, could you just talk about ordinance seventy four ninety, do you happen to have that in front of you?
I don't have seventy four ninety, I thought I did.
Um, it's, it's highlighted on page six oh three of the packet, just for council members.
Seventy four ninety, that's the open storage prohibited?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's kind of how we, that's all the citations, and probably, I, I'm gonna give you a rough number of, of probably fifteen citations we've issued in the last year and a half. So basically, what she's doing is she's storing all that, all that, it, it's treasures to somebody, it's debris to me, cause it's, it's, um, it's, it's basically been rained on, snowed on, everything else, so she can store all she wants in her garage in her house, but once it comes outside, that's where the seventy four ninety, uh, code comes in effect, so. Yes, that's what we're citing here, um, basically, all her tickets are seventy four ninety, storage of, uh, property outside, you know, the dwelling.
And I know, kind of, the ways that what Valerie had laid out before, you know, that now would also be the time where Ms. Appleby or whatever representatives could ask questions. I do not see her online, do not see her here in chambers, so I just want to mention that, I did check my email a few minutes ago, there's no emails there, so I just want to make sure public knows, there's no one here, there's no one online, but we are, do have open questions, uh, Gabrielle, I see your question, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the thing I'm, I'm not clear about in terms of, um, in terms of us upholding this determination of it being a public nuisance, is what is, what is. of it being a public nuisance is what is, what is the series of consequences? So from what I'm hearing, we pay for the cleanup and then we charge the resident to reimburse the city for that cleanup. Is that the only consequence or is there more to it than?
Actually, what really this kicks in is now we as a city, every time we go there to that property, which the homeowner has to pay us. So they're on the ticket every time we drive by, every citation we write, all our time, all our energy, all our mileage, everything, they have to start paying. So we'll bill them basically for all the city's time, um, which we have not done that yet. We haven't done anything. We just have, you know, rolled it in our daily stuff. So now we actually bill her for everything that we have to do prior and post getting the, you know, the order to be able to clean the property up.
Well, just, just for clarification, if I may, what, what this resolution would request is authorization for declaration of chronic nuisance. It would allow us to bill for city services provided after the declaration. We are not, uh, pursuing any sort of, um, uh, compensation for city services utilized to this point for, uh, at this time.
Yeah, correct. That's, that's, that's the, anything that we do for from here that pertains to that property, that we can bill them for that. Yes.
I've got Joe and then Julia after that. Go ahead, Joe.
What if she doesn't pay? Are you billing?
Oh, we can't hear you, Joe.
What if she doesn't pay? Like, you, you continue to bill her and, and just bills keep coming in, never, never get payment for that?
Uh, it'll just go on her property taxes?
Okay. Uh, Julia?
Yes, what happened if she, um, you know, she doesn't do anything else, you know, that she continue accumulating more of this, you know, I don't know, going to say stuff, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So what is the next step? Because, you know, yeah, we are going to go and bill, but that's, it doesn't, billing it doesn't make any, you know, any action, you know, we bill, but the action is because of all the neighbors is affecting the area. They want more like a solution, you know, to clean up. So when, when is the next step? When the city can say, okay, you know what, we are going to start cleaning up everything?
So this is, when we go to the Circuit Court judge, we want to say, we did everything in our power to help her alleviate this, gave her every chance we possibly could to alleviate this. Now, she, she just was not following it. So now we want an injunction, be able to go onto her property, remove everything on the exterior that, that we deem as garbage or junk. And, uh, you know, that basically gives us another tool in, in our kit that when we go to court, the, the judge is going to go, oh, man, City of Pittsburgh, you guys bent over backwards trying to get this property cleaned up. She didn't follow it. You know, otherwise the judge is going to sit, look at me and go, Mr. Crook, did you do everything possible to, uh, help alleviate this? And I said, oh, no, I couldn't, no. So this is just one more bullet in our gun. So we go there, say, we did everything we possibly could. We gave every resource we possibly could, plus also it is, if we can bill these people our money and our time, um, for going up there.
I've got Gabriella. Follow up quick, okay. And then Gabriella and then Dave.
Here's a follow-up question. So when you're gonna go to the court? How, how, how long is it going to pass from to, if we approve that tonight? You know, you're gonna go there again to, to look, to see if they're doing some cleaning and if they don't? When you're gonna say, okay, enough? What is, what is your deadline?
Yeah, I'm not, I, I can't give you a definite answer on that. I, I would love to give those neighborhood, you know, those people definite answer. You know, the court systems are jammed up because of COVID. Everything's jammed up because of COVID. We're, we're going to keep taking pictures. We're going to keep writing citations. Um, I don't know where this daughter all of a sudden came from. I, I, I really pray in my heart that she does move in and she does clean up. Uh, but once again, they're going to have to get another dumpster back. As soon as we possibly can, as soon as I get the okay from the power up above me, I, um, we're going to go, go to court. I mean, this has gone on long enough. So yes, as soon as I possibly can, I'm going to court. But I can't say it's going to be next week. I can't say it's next month. I just can't give anybody a hard timeline.
And if I may step in at this point, I'd really like to narrow our focus, at least right now, on the fact finding specifically to this chronic nuisance. I think certainly these other discussions about what might happen subsequently are warranted and appropriate. I would just say probably not, just, probably not just now in particular here.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of clarification questions I was hoping just to make for the record. I know, uh, there's some information in the packet. John, um, specifically, I think you have copies of the notices that were sent to Ms. Appleby. Is that right?
Correct.
Can you, just so that everybody knows what's in them, can you speak a little bit to what's in those notices? Because as I understand, there's some statute or some ordinance requirements in terms of what's contained in the notice. And I think that it would be good to know if those were covered, like, uh, you know, like, was there a street address and all of that other stuff that's in?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, like the chronic nuisance one that, um, we just sent out at twenty-three thirty-seven Apache Drive. We quoted the section of the Pittsburgh Municipal Ordinance of seventy-four dash ninety, uh, open storage. That's, that's basically, um, what we're citing everything back by, uh, seventy-four fifty-six states. Building inspector determines the owner's abatement is for reason, reason unsuccessful. The matter shall be, be referred to the council. So I determined that we were unsuccessful there. So, um, we did that. That's why we're here, uh, from Apache. You know, as far as citations, they have just been piling up and piling up. Um, you know, everything's basically in your packets if you guys want to read it. As I say, this is our second time around trying to declare this a public nuisance. Um, she came forward last time with a plan of action. I, I'm going to tell you, even if she comes back with a plan of action this time, we're, I'm going to deny it and hopefully I, we get, you know, hopefully we get the chronic nuisance declared tonight and not just, we can just go forward with this. Because I, I don't believe that she has the capability of, of, of removing it all.
I have Gabriella and then Dave after that.
Yes, I'm curious if you can, so from what I've heard and what I've read in the packet, the, it seems to me that the action in terms of what we've provided her is, is explanation about what a public nuisance is, what the problem is, what needs to be resolved, requesting a, a plan of action that wasn't followed through on. Are there any resources given to her for like mental health? Because, because my understanding is that this is a hoarding issue, which is, from what I understand, is a mental health issue. And one or both of the, there's two tenants in the home. One or both of them clearly has a mental health issue that's leading them to do this hoarding. Is there any services provided or like county services provided to them that help them work through those problems? Because I guess in my, the back of my mind, I'm thinking that, you know, I, I think it sounds like it's time to maybe clean up the property. But if we don't, if that person doesn't get mental health services, it's likely that the property is just going to go right back to the state it was in before. And we're just going to be in like a non, an unending cycle. So what other resources have you provided? Or has the county provided to these individuals to help solve the, the mental health underlying issue?
I really can't speak to the county, but, uh, the senior center has worked with her, you know, trying to alleviate some of the things. There, and as I say, they paid for a dumpster out of the friends of, the senior friends. Um, so they've thrown resources at her. I really can't speak to, uh, uh, the state of mind of anybody. Um, I, I'm pretty much a two-by-four, sixteen-penny nail guy. I know when I drive by, there, there's junk that's been there for sixteen months and I'm getting complaints on a daily basis. We need to address this. Yes, I'm hoping that the daughter understands that the tenant that is there, there's two people actually that live there. A tenant and the daughter has not moved in yet, is my understanding. She sounded like she was going to move in from what I heard earlier. So yes, I, I, I can't speak to the mental part of it, but I can speak to the part of it that the neighborhood is frustrated. We're wasting our time there because we've got a ton of other work to do and we're short-staffed, just like everybody else, that we can't be chasing that around. But yes, I'm hoping that the daughter gets involved and that, that supposedly her son was going to be involved in the Fourth of July. That's kind of why we wrote it out a little bit. Um, so I, as I, um, I, I see Jack popped up there, but I, I don't think that we had, uh, this first time of contact, any, heard of the daughter. So I, I don't know where she's been in sixteen months, so I, I can't speak to that.
Could I follow up on that?
Sure. Yep.
So just to clarify, like, we, we provided, the citations is what we mostly have been doing is like warnings and explanation about the consequences of what's going to happen in the future. But, and then there's, there was the friends of the senior center provided a dumpster, like paid for a dumpster so that they could actually physically remove the items without any cost to them. But we don't know if there's any sort of mental health services that they have access to. So we don't, we don't know any of the status of any of that.
Correct. That, that, you know, that, that's out of my pay range. Um, I, I think that the seniors did talk to her some, you know, but I, I'm not, I can't speak to that.
I think Chief Paul Marcker might know more about that.
Yeah, one of the reasons why we refer to the senior center, either the fire department, the police department or Fitchroona EMS is because of the fact that they have caseworkers that are allowed to assist the, uh, the, the people who require, um, more information. So th- those resources were made available through the senior center.
Yeah, I, and, and whether she followed up on that, I don't know. I can't speak to that. Um, I think she did have some contact with them in talking, in, in talking to Jill, but, you know, whether she followed, she hasn't really followed through anything. And yes, it's absolutely, there's a, there's, there's, she sees value in everything and so do I, but junk is junk.
But the senior center definitely provided her some sort of, okay, I want to make sure that that was, that avenue had been taken.
Chad, your fault.
Yeah, I actually wanted to add a little bit addition. It's most of my understanding from Jill Mccone, the senior center director, that there was a, uh, an agency working with, uh, the property owner there, uh, that does receive some sort of county funding. I can't say for certain what the name of that agency is, um, but does, uh, receive some county funding to help support, uh, county residents. So there's clearly been an effort provided, uh, not only by the senior center to help resolve the situation through, uh, donating dumpsters, but also outreach via the senior center's caseworkers to provide resources and also some outreach to the county, uh, to see about any resources that may, maybe provided or have been provided.
We got Dave next and then Randy.
I've, you know, talk about a number of complaints. I've, I've probably gotten three a month myself, you know, that I knew about. I said, we're working on it. But we have, we have, I've been working with Jill. I had a large, decent number of volunteers ready to go down there and fill up that dumpster. She just had to give us the, the go-ahead and, and she didn't, you know. I, I think I could still get, you know, the, the neighbors around there would probably come. If you said, we got dumpster we can clean up today, they'll show up and, and, but that offer has been there, you know. I don't think she's physically able to put the stuff in the dumpster, but we had volunteers that were going to go do it. So I just wanted, wanted to add that.
Randy?
Yeah, no, I think we're taking all the appropriate steps. Uh, just from some, some personal experience, uh, in-law side, I, I've seen this, I've witnessed it. If the state of mind is not dealt with, I can tell you this is just going to reoccur and reoccur and reoccur. I've been through it four times myself and much worse than this. Um, you're taking the right steps and I understand that, John. But somebody needs to intervene, if not the senior center or at a county level or somewhere. Um, otherwise, we're just going to be down this road again next year. So.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, the city our size, we got limited resources, you know, as I say.
I agree, yeah.
You guys are going to go through the budget and everybody's asking for somebody and, and, you know, you heard it tonight from everybody. It's, you know, our resources are limited and, and, you know, we can't, I, I just say, I hate doing this. This is a lose-lose situation for me. Because I'm, I feel like, you know, I'm picking on somebody that can't do anything, but yet I owe it to the neighborhood. But, um, it, it has to be done. I mean, it just, it just, you know, I just, you know, we have to move forward with this and, and we got to let our heartstrings and our, our heads, our heads, uh, be strong and just go for it. And if it comes down again, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll address that down the road.
Sounds like we took the right channels as far as the senior center. I just hope that, um, I heard word case manager, maybe, maybe somebody can, can work with this individual and, um, I mean, just to cut it off of the past, because we will be down this road again, unfortunately.
And this may be the stick that gets her going. Um, as I say, we heard from the daughter, but I want this approved tonight. Because that gives us one more step that we can go to Circuit Court with this. You know, if I don't get it, I, I won't have any backing. There's no sense in going to Circuit Court. So we'd be right back to square one in, in December and January of next year with tarps over, you know, two foot of snow, so.
Other fact finding questions? Chief, you had a question?
Yeah, just one more question. And John, I believe by moving this forward, this doesn't prevent the daughter from moving in and helping out, right? So those two things can happen at the same time and that allows us to move forward in the event that it, it carries on the, on the same projection.
Correct. Yeah, you know, we're going to go after it. We're, we're not, we have to. But if we see some positive stuff within the next week or two, you know, just deal with the inside stuff later. Get the front and backyards cleaned up for the neighborhood, you know, and then we can go down that road, you know, and deal with it later. But, um, I, I need, we need this passed. We, we've been wasting our, it's too much time wasted on, on this one property.
Other questions, trying to get more information, fact finding, clarify anything?
Yeah, I, I, if I may, John, just for clarification, um, so as you know, seventy dash fifty-four, our ordinance requires notice to be given of the initial chronic nuisance, not the notice that you mentioned about this hearing happening. And so just so that we have a clear record, do you want to talk a little bit about that initial notice and whether it's provided all of the things that it needs to provide? Or are you asking the council to rely on the, on the information that's in the packet? But if you could just clarify if that's something that you believe was addressed or, or not?
Um, so that, the initial notice was, was given to her, um, on, my letters are all here. July twenty-four, or July twentieth, um, that was the public hearing notice that we gave her. So this letter basically was to inform you that, you know, we're, we're, we're going to take you to court. So she had every opportunity to make, make, come back to us, make a plan, um, be present here today. You know, unfortunately, the daughter was going to be here, but, but she had to work. I understand that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I'm talking about the initial notice of your chronic nuisance determination. I think that would have been last year.
The original one, way, way, way back when, in, um, January fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, um, is when we actually, that was the first one. Actually, that's the second and final notice. Well, this is really the first one that we described, um, the chronic nuisance. So this went back to January fourteenth and this is when, uh, um, you know, we knew she was a chronic nuisance because we were there. Um, so this is when she came forward with our plan, or her plan. And we pushed that to, um, May first, uh, because of the weather and because everything was frozen. So she's been made aware this, this second time we went to where the chronic nuisance, um, you know, was just basically a redo of what we gave her back in January.
Your January letter says that it's a second notice and final notice.
I, I, that's the only ones I have. I don't think that we gave her, um, public nuisance was in, oh, August twenty-fifth. Yeah, I guess that was a, a general one that we sent out in August twenty-fifth of, of two thousand and twenty, notification of public nuisance. And at that time, so we've had three separate letters. Um, uh, the public nuisance declared a chronic nuisance may, may be deemed, um, a chronic nuisance. We didn't really go through it officially like we did with the January fourteenth letter, where we basically said we were going to take you to council. And then the last letter on, on July twenty-first or twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one was when we actually set this, this court hearing up. So there's actually been three notifications sent to her.
And did any or all of them comply with seventy fifty-four, which requires that the parcel be named and description of the issues?
It's twenty-three, you know, the, uh, twenty-three, I gotta put my glasses down. Twenty-three thirty-seven Apache Drive, Pittsburgh, Wisconsin. Um, so it was all her address. It was addressing to Christine Appleby, the actual owner of the property at the present time.
Anything else, Valerie?
That's all.
All right. Anything else from council members? Ms. Appleby's not here, obviously, to state her case. Uh, Joe, did you raise your hand? Oh, sorry. All right, so seeing nothing else, Valerie, uh, seems like she's not here to present her case. And we've asked plenty of questions, trying to get that information. So it seems that now we would go into closed session. Would that be correct?
Yes, so I think if the council wants to and it seems like it would be a good idea, the council can go into a closed session for two reasons. One would be to deliberate regarding this case. One would be to deliberate regarding this case and the others to confer with me as your legal counsel if you wish to do so. So at this point, you can move to go into a closed session pursuant to either one of those reasons. At that closed session, I think it would be appropriate to have me, if you wish to have some legal advice and some assistance in this. This is not an opportunity for building inspection to present any additional evidence or for anyone else really for that matter to present additional evidence. This is just for you to deliberate about the evidence that you have before you, both the testimony as well as the information that's in your packet. So with that, I think I will leave to you how you want to move forward.
And it's not a requirement, but?
It is not required, although certainly if you want to discuss this and deliberate in private, you can. I think if the council is inclined to, I think I would probably recommend it.
All right. All right, so if someone would like to move to go into closed session, you have to read that whole paragraph. Gabriella?
I can do it.
Thank you.
Is it, should I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851A, deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body. And Wisconsin statutes 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved to deliberate on the verified charges.
Is there a second? Seconded by Randy. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, so just before we go into closed session, for public to know, you can still follow online. Mr. Martin, looks like he jumped off. Hopefully he's still following online. Oh, perfect. He's in the waiting room. Great. So when we come back, we can bring him back in, but he is not in here. It's going to be the council and Valerie and Chad and probably Tracy, but building inspection is leaving at this point in time. So, all right, into closed session.
I'd like to move that we reconvene in open session.
Second.
Sent by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, we are back into open session. Then Dave, would you like to do a motion?
Stop right there. I'd like to move that now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Pittsburgh Common Council that after hearing all evidence presented, determination of chronic nuisance at 23, or 2937 Apache Drive, the building inspector is therefore affirmed based on the following.
It's actually 2337.
2337 Apache Drive. The building inspector is hereby affirmed based on the following.
All right, is there a second? Sent by Randy. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is confirmed.
Thank you, everybody. If I interrupt there quick.
Thank you. Tomorrow is committee of the whole.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we can just get on the record that we have a draft resolution that the council is voting on and that copy will be provided for signature?
Yes, we do have kind of a fuller resolution we will make available to the public, put it in the packet. You can see a little bit of here and that will be available and in probably tomorrow really for anyone that wants to see it.
And it will include all of the findings?
Yep, it will include all the evidence presented tonight. All right, as there, committee holds tomorrow night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second. Second.
By Randy, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, we are adjourned.